I call this special meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. I'll note that it's a special meeting because normally we're on the first or third Tuesdays, and this is our study session night, but today we're doing a kind of a funky hybrid work session and regular session rolled into one. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 in city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card on the table by the door for those here at City Hall, or emailing ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least forty-eight hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos cuarenta y ocho horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuya et cetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, and we'll move on to our announcements. Milwaukee is updating its transportation system plan, a twenty-year guide for improving and adapting how we all get around. After a year of research and planning, a draft list of transportation projects for each travel mode is available. To review and comment on the list of priority projects, you can now take a short survey on Engage Milwaukee and let us know which types of projects matter most to you, which specific projects you'd like to see prioritize, and if there are any missing projects we should consider. The survey will be open through July fifteenth. And I said short survey, but you could take a lot of time doing this one. You could be very short, but you could take a lot of time if you really want to dig into the maps. This Friday kicks off the Milwaukee Arts Committees, another year of Porch Fest, Friday, July eighteenth, or eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, the next three Fridays from six thirty to eight thirty PM. The community is invited to create music from their homes or walk and bike around to enjoy the performances. For details, including a map of the performance locations, visit milwaukeeporchfest.com. And the first annual Milwaukee Fest is coming up July eleventh through the thirteenth, and you won't want to miss it. Friday night will feature live music, food, crafts, and a screening of Minions Four...oh, I thought it was Despicable Me Four. Despicable Me Four at Ardenwald Park. Saturday is the most action-packed of the three days with kids' activities, live professional wrestling, community booths, jazzercise, and much more downtown. And to wrap it up on Sunday, stop by the farmer's market for lots of activities for kids, including face painting and crafts. And when I found out that Porch Fest and Milwaukee Fest were starting the same night, I was kind of bummed, but actually, you can do Milwaukee Fest from, I mean, Porch Fest from six thirty to eight thirty and probably still get over to catch some of the fun in Ardenwald Park, so they don't necessarily have to conflict. Join a community-led festive gathering to celebrate LGBTQIA+ pride on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, from eleven AM to two PM at Scott Park. The event will include community groups, crafts, fun activities, and live entertainment. The event was originally scheduled for June twenty-sixth but had to be rescheduled due to that rain downpour we got in late June. Have you noticed new types of housing popping up around Milwaukee? Smaller homes cluster together on a single lot where you might be used to seeing just one house? If you are curious what housing this is, where it's allowed, and how the city regulates it, please join City Council and staff for an educational middle housing town hall on Monday, July twenty-eighth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM here at City Hall. Prior to the town hall, you can visit Engage Milwaukee to learn more and submit any questions that you would like us to address at the town hall. A summary of the questions and comments received on Engage Milwaukee and at the town hall will then be shared in early August. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at milwaukeeoregon.gov or call 503-786-7555. And I had one additional slide. Yes, I wanted to make sure people knew about the Little Float. The Downtown Alliance of Milwaukee is bringing us a new fun summer event on Saturday, August second, the Little Float. People are, will be, I believe, floating from, they will shuttle you to Elkhart Island, float from Elkhart Island to the boat ramp. There will be activities in Milwaukee Bay Park and stuff. So I don't pretend to know all of what's been planned, but that is the website there where you can, you do need to buy a ticket. It's only five dollars, but it's their way of tracking number of participants and making sure they have enough shuttles and all of that. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think it'll be a lot of fun. And then we have the haiku, a summer-themed haiku. Sun burns, hug my face, ice cream melts faster than me, summer's prank on us. This haiku was created via ChatGPT with a prompt from our city recorder, but, and truthfully, I don't care if you write your own haiku or you use ChatGPT, just submit some haiku, pick a favorite summer, you know, Porch Fest, we got Porch Fest, we can have a Porch Fest haiku. We will have another one next week, so get in your haiku and let's celebrate summer in Milwaukee with some haiku. Okay, so we have no proclamations tonight. Community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comments on city business that is not on the agenda. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the June seventeenth comments, Ms. Saber?
Mayor, there is not.
Okay, we might not have even had any comments that night. Okay. Do we have anybody who's wanting to comment tonight? No? Okay. Do you have anybody online who looks like they're wanting to comment? Okay, so then I'm going to forego this script and go to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the city council May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five study session, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five work session, and May twentieth, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five regular session, a resolution acting as the local contract review board approving the award of two contracts with Dow LLC and Consor North America, Inc., for on-call construction inspection services. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. The consent agenda was approved unanimously. All right, so we get to the first item of business, which is a presentation on the new city website by Jordan M. Law, our communications program manager.
Good afternoon, good council. Thanks for having me. Yeah, just going to show a preview of the new city website that staff have been working on for probably about, actually, a year now, through all the process of the RFP for selecting a vendor and doing an analysis on our website now and kind of going through the whole design process. So we can just get started by kind of showing you what we have now and why we're transitioning to a new website. So the website that we have now, the one that we know and love, was last refreshed in twenty-seventeen, so eight years ago. It cost about forty thousand dollars at the time, and there was actually kind of a bargain based on some of our other bids that we had received at the time. And we actually, and Mayor, you probably remember this, we used three different vendors actually to create it. One was Aha!, which was the web provider itself that turned into Muni Code at the time, and then Gabe Storm, local graphic designer extraordinaire, and then Oregonia Media Group, who did the wireframes and the layout. And since then, it's been maintained by Civic Plus, which is actually the same web provider that got bought out several times, and now it's Civic Plus. But the thing, the primary reason and the primary driving force in all of this is the fact that our platform now is obsolete. They just can't update it anymore, and so we have to do something about it. The Civic Plus had proposed, if we really wanted to just do kind of the bare minimum, was kind of adding a few features to sort of let it limp along for a little while longer, but that wasn't really going to be that cost feasible, so it seemed better just to go with a whole new refresh and get a whole new website. And so we did an RFP process a few months ago. We received proposals from Granicus, Civic Plus, our current one, and Revise, and we selected Revise. They came back by far the lowest out of the three. So for the first year, it's just under thirty thousand dollars, which is cheaper than what we did last time, eight years ago, and then just six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per year up until the fifth year, which we get a free redesign and we just have to pay the hosting cost. But this was one of the only proposals that also came with a free redesign, which is really nice, and they'll also do some updates to the platform and things like that, so it should be some cost savings in the future. And here's just, before we get into the website itself, I'll just point out some highlights. So the search that has plagued everyone for the longest time will be much better. It's actually just going to be essentially a Google search, which was what everyone was kind of doing anyway as a workaround to not have to search stuff on the website. So there's no, like, search, like its own search housed inside the website. It's also, has the ability to send out newsletters that are much more aesthetically pleasing. Right now, we basically, we can send out newsletters, but they just look like plain text, there's not much to it. We can add images and videos and links that are actually more, much more interactive and easy to use. It's also easier to highlight activities and events throughout the whole website, and it's easier on the, on city staff too, to be able to do that themselves. Right now, a lot of it depends on the staff who are in charge of the website, the web team, kind of going through them, and then this kind of process to get it up, and now users, the end-users have much more flexibility to do it themselves. And there's just a bit more logical structure to it. Right now, it's pretty good, but it's, there's just some tweaks here and there that'll make it a bit easier, and there's a few added tabs for searching and finding things. It also has much better ADA compliance. It meets the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines for the 2.2 AA standard, which is essentially the gold standard that everyone's trying to meet right now. There's a triple A standard, but it's really hard to get and kind of, yeah, cumbersome to actually get it sometimes in a website. This one actually comes with another accessibility widget, so people who come to the website can set up their own preferences and can set up their own preferences, and when they return, the cookies will save it and, like, it'll be exactly how they set it up. You can switch contrast, things like that. And then there's some easy translation buttons. There's some kind of like hot buttons where you can do the three primary languages spoken in Milwaukee, and then a big dropdown box to choose more than 50 other languages. And let's go into the website. Let's see. I think it was already up, wasn't it, Scott? Oh, yeah. So this is the new web homepage. So as, like on our website we have right now, we have like the sliders that are topic-specific. These ones, the, basically the banners just rotate photos, but like we can change this little box here, which is current project. So you can highlight a bunch of projects, or you could do programs, events, whatever you want in that one. It's really customizable. This new feature, well, it has like this pop-up thing. This is a kind of our new alert thing that, like, we had a banner before that would change colors. Now we can do like a little pop-up box. We can also change sort of how it looks. And then for the popular services, we can add different tools. We can also run analytics to see what are the most popular ones and switch them out whenever we want. They're not static. We're working on some icons, so like these ones all just look like a standard credit card, but yeah, it's still a work in progress, so there's a few things that are a little, not quite finished yet. But those are also, again, you can switch them around to whoever you want. This is a... Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot to do that. It has a little animation when you hover over the thing, a little goose head pops up.
Oh. That's cute. And so that'll just be whatever four fixed ones, it does, it's not going to have more that you hit more and go to the right.
No, it's just the four. We could add more, but when we were doing some like user experience testing, four seemed like pretty much the most you could do without sort of overwhelming people.
Okay.
But they're easily swapped in and out. And so this is kind of a news section, like, right now it's set up as news. It just has some place fillers, obviously, that you, you can kind of like scroll to other topics, and it kind of just goes around. But we're in the process of changing this up. So right now, it basically only shows news, but the way that we send out news releases and things, it doesn't make sense to just have it to be news. So we're going to have them add like projects and events and other things that can be added to this highlighted section, just for more varied content. And then this is the new calendar, and it has kind of the feature like phones and other things do, where it shows like a dot if there's like an event on it. But what was really nice that we were, is how it breaks out kind of the type of event it is, between city meetings, library, community events. We get a lot of confusion right now when we just put an event on our calendar that, oh, well, it must be a city event if it's on your calendar, but that's often like not the case for, you know, sharing the community's events, so that'll help kind of distinguish it. And then also it just helps people filter it out and find exactly what they're looking for.
So, like, Milwaukee Fest is, it's not a city meeting. It's a community event, but it's one the city put on.
Yeah, it'd be a community event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then library will have its own events. It, yeah, and library sometimes has like overwhelmed the calendar because they do so much. They're all great, but like, yeah, you can't find what you're really looking for because it's all library.
If you do view full calendar, you can see every event that's happening, or?
Yeah, it'll show it kind of like the calendar now, like when you go to it, so it'll show everything that's going on. Not everything's on there yet, but yeah. And then you can also export it and download it, which you could kind of do before, but didn't really work that well. I can't see anything. Where's the back?
Only forward on you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's true. Good thinking. That's why the assistant's in. And then the bottom is cleaned up, too. Like, there's actually like a stay-up-to-date section before, before it just had a ton of, just kind of like departments and like more of what you would find in the mega menus. And, but what was hard about the other one is we couldn't change that ourselves. We'd had to like send off like a service ticket to have it updated, and then usually it would take a few days. Now we can do this right away, and we can switch them in and out whenever we want to.
I think this might be a good point to also say, and I think I've talked to several of you about this, you know, I've got a vision for even more digital communication we can do with constituents. Revise does have a newsletter platform that will be really seamless for both helping people subscribe, manage those.
Emma, Emma, Emma.
Thank you, Scott. I'm out of practice. Sorry for everyone listening in at home. I was talking about the e-newsletter feature that our new website will enable us to have. So it's been a big lift on the website up and running. We'll tackle newsletters next, once this is live, but I'm really excited both about kind of a From the Desk of the City Manager newsletter that can, people can subscribe to, and I know several of our departments are excited about that as well. For example, our Climate and Natural Resources team is really excited about kind of a quarterly climate newsletter, so just another great way for us to stay connected with our community.
Yeah, yeah, much more eas, much easier to communicate now. And if you wanted to take a look at one of the department pages, we can look at City Council. So each department and like page, like landing page like this can have its own banner that can be swapped in and out. This one can now show your contact information pretty easily and right up front, right away. And then it also has the things you're working on in this side column right here that can be swapped in and out whenever you'd like. This is technically like actually a business directory template, so this is kind of set up for people, but it actually works really well for that. Another one that, that's kind of like one of the good standards is the library. This is kind of, it looks reminiscent of the site we have now, but also I think it's much easier to tell what's going on and kind of differentiate between the information. And then it also still has the side menus that pop out and get to what you want. And this is the accessibility widget that I was talking about. So this is where you can, for anybody, they can make the text bigger, they make, if you're visually impaired, you can use the contrast button, highlight links. And then there is, I think there's like a speech one, too, but yeah, much, much more user-friendly in that regard. Any other questions about anything on the new website?
When you said speech, you're talking about, you could have the, it would read the content to you?
Yeah, it'd read it out to you, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Most computers would likely have that feature anyway, but just in case, it would be built into the website, too.
And it automatically is going to translate into these three languages?
Yeah.
So give me, yeah, show me a Russian page. Poppy, Yarny, Slubi.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, it's super fast. I think before, when we just used Google Translate, it would like take, I don't know, two or three minutes or something to process, but yeah, yeah, a lot of geese. That was just for fun.
What's the third language beyond Spanish?
Chinese. I can't remember, it's, I think it's Mandarin, right?
Mandarin?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the other... You can hit reset to make it go back to English, but then this is the dropdown where you can go to like any, looks like any language you're looking for in the top right corner.
And they'll do it? They'll do any language?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, Latvian. There you go. Okay.
Latvian.
Popolatry, popo, popo.
Yeah.
Okay. That's awesome.
And I'll switch back to the presentation if you want. Oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, we're still working on some features like the news section I mentioned. We're also, Mark Inman was especially excited about this one. We can do video now on the homepage, too. So instead of like the sliding button, we can do drone video, and he's very excited to take some drone video for us all around Milwaukee, so it'll look similar to that. Am I sharing that? Okay. Sorry.
So I noticed at the bottom of the page, it said police news, so their news releases are going to be separate from other city news releases?
Yeah, that's how they are now, and that's what has seemed to be working for us.
I mean, I've found it super hard to find the police ones. I can find the general city ones. I've found it really hard to find the police ones. I mean, he sends them to us, so we know they went out, but it's like finding it on the website.
I agree, it's been kind of buried, but I think this will both maintain the separation, which, which is helpful for, you know, for just the, for the volume of news that sometimes has to come out with public safety alerts, but they'll be easier to find. So I think that was an example. On the homepage, you'll be able to see it right away. You won't have to go to the police page and then dig, 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 dig.
Yeah.
But we can still work with the web provider to see if there's maybe a way in like the news section, maybe to kind of separate it and like tag some police, tag some like just general city that maybe it'll, you know, you could filter it out, but still get it in the same spot.
Yeah.
We could look into that.
Yeah. I mean, I don't have a strong feeling on that. I just, you know, I...
It's not set up where I would show you, but we're working to get their news releases just like you would go to the police button, like from under departments, and right on their homepage is all their news. You'd have like a brief introduction, and then it's just news releases right there. So hopefully you don't have to dig around anymore and try to find it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so right now, we're just working towards our launch date, which is July 23rd. So the web team's going through, just doing quality assurance. Like during the migration period, the, it's like the templates don't match up like one-to-one from the old site to the new website, so some kind of got forced into one or another, seemingly, you know, might work the best. And so we're just going through and cleaning that all up and making sure that they didn't miss anything when we migrated content. And the other staff who contribute content to the website are going through their department sites, too, and making sure it's all there, making sure links work, because a few were broken in the process. Some numbers were kind of, you know, like inadvertently transposed. And so that kind of works going on behind the scenes. There's also been some trainings, too. Staff have been trained up on the website. We've already had two for the content managers, and then the web team's received, I think, four at this point, and there's still a few more to go. And the old website will still be active for two months after we go live, so if there is something that happens to have been missed or something like that, we're not going to lose all that content, we'll still have it.
When you say it's active, somebody would have to come to staff to look at it.
The old website?
Yeah.
Yeah, or you could use, there's like that, what is that website called? The Wayback Machine?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you can actually go there and it'll give you a snapshot of what it looks like, too. But yeah, or you could just, yeah, come talk to one of, one of the web team people and we could help you with it.
Okay. Cool.
Anyway, happy to answer questions or be done, whatever you like.
Questions? Anymore?
Jordan, thank you. It looks amazing. And the only question I have is really just like if there have been any conversations within either some of our committees or, you know, other groups that might have an advanced peak as well, just to see like, is the translation on point for cultural understanding, or is it just, you know, how sometimes like things can be missed in translation?
Yeah, we did go to the Equity Steering Committee, and we showed them a preview of the website and, yeah, talked about the accessibility features and the translation, and then showed them just like the general layout and design to see if they had any issues with it, and they thought it looked good.
Awesome.
Yeah. And then, and just internally, too, we've showed several staff members from each department, too, just also to make sure that
Okay.
they feel like it's, yeah, a good layout that works.
It seems like if we have any things that come up that need to be changed, it's a lot easier.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a lot easier. Yeah, that's one really nice thing about working with Revise is that, yeah, it's not, we seem to kind of, I don't know, yeah, be sort of locked in for a lot of things on the old website, but this one, yeah, it's much more flexible.
Okay, that's great. And then my other question is just, like, since you can put video on the main page now, will you be uploading a video of the Millie Mustangs dance-off?
We could, yeah. Yeah, I think the video there just works with like a YouTube link, so like we could pretty much put any video there.
Okay.
But yeah, definitely the dance-off, yeah.
I know that there are inquiring minds who want to know who's going to win that.
Yeah.
Consider it done, council.
Yeah. And speaking of that, too, you'd actually add video to pages like much easier than you used to be able to. Before, you'd have to basically know like some HTML and like code it onto the page, which caused a whole cascade of other issues after that. But now you can pretty much just drag and drop like photos, videos, all kinds of stuff onto whatever page you'd like, so.
Wow.
Much easier. We're really living in 2025.
Jordan, this is amazing. For the average Milwaukeean, I feel like this is, when they think of interacting with city government, this is going to be the way that they do it. So you should feel really proud for what you've been able to put together. My question is, with like department pages and navigation, I've spent a lot of time digging into different things put together by our planning department, and I've found that in the past, it can be challenging to navigate those department websites.
Oh, yeah.
Where information is displayed, how it's displayed, and the narrative that it kind of tells through the layout alone. Have you been working with different departments to think about revamping what they've done in old websites as you bring it onto a new system, or is this something they'll continue to do?
Oh, no, we have, we have been working with them so far. I mean, initially, just to migrate content, like we cut down a lot just to kind of save money, but also just to, yeah, chop off stuff that like people aren't, aren't find, or aren't really using, and then are inhibiting ways of finding things. And then, yeah, we're working with them for better layouts now that we have more flexibility on these department pages to use different navigation, kind of like the left navigation was a good way to kind of break out some of that, rather than just like a whole page of like boxes and then trying to dig down through each box. Yeah, it'll be more organized, and then we're using Google Analytics a bit more, too, to pop up the pages that people are frequently going to, so you're not going to have to dig around for the ones that you're trying to find.
And I don't think we can overstate how bad the search feature was
Yeah.
on our, is on our current website and how much better it will be on this. So we don't want people to have to dig and dig and dig. You know, if you, if you search by a few keywords, our hope is that you'll be able to very quickly find the content that you need. And there is a, this migration did mean we have to kind of update how our document library is stored. What's it called? The DOD?
Documents on Demand.
Documents on Demand, which is going to be some change management. I'm looking at my city recorder, who's like, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But right now, the way that our documents work on our current website, every time I up, we upload an agenda, it's a PDF, which is effectively its own webpage, and it's, it, A, just makes your website really bulky, and it also then is hard for some of that content management system. So there will be some bumps, but I think in the long run, the document library and then the, the way we can archive that in Content Manager will be better in this system than it is in today's website.
Jordan, on that note, I was going to flag that, too. Can you show us on the website where the documents will be?
It's not all the way set up.
Not set up yet?
Yeah. We are doing some tweaks to it, so I think it looked like it was offline earlier today, so I can definitely show you.
I haven't even wrapped my head around what this is going to look like in terms of posting agendas and minutes and packets, so it's going to be different.
Yeah.
So that's like the current ongoing documents, but we have an archive system with the state, right? And is that going to be accessible through here?
That portal will remain, and there'll be a page, a land, there'll continue to be a landing page on our new website, and so everything, that, that won't, it's not going to change, because that's state's website. But for current, and how far back, do you remember, we're going?
The two years?
It was on the current website back two years.
Maybe just one year then?
Yeah.
Yeah, at least one year.
I think maybe we're just archiving back to January of this year for what will be on the active new website. Everything will still be in Content Manager online, so, but yeah, it's going to be different. I don't even know what that means yet.
The one nice thing is like if you revise an agenda, for instance, like you don't have to re-upload PDFs, it's just in one spot, and it's automatically updated on like the calendar event page, like for City Council.
Okay.
So it's not where you'd have to like take down a PDF, re-upload it, and each time you did it, you were creating a webpage that kind of messed with Google, that would sometimes come up in weird searches, so now it's just a more direct update rather than separate files. And that was one thing we did keep running into as well, like staff would find old PDFs, like somehow like somebody from the community would search for like a building application or something, but they would come up with one from like 2005 that should have been deleted all really long time ago, but for some reason didn't. But part of that was the problem of having to like upload PDFs to pages constantly, and so this takes that like step out of the way and kind of reduces that risk of, of old things being out there. And so this takes that like step out of the way and kind of reduces that risk of, of old things being out there.
We're joining the cloud revolution.
Yeah, awesome.
I just want to really quickly echo the thanks and just, it's been a great job, Jordan. You know, Jordan's been a huge lift on this. Hannah Wells is our halftime web services coordinator. And she both helped build this and build a new employee internet in the last like six months. Um, and they've just, they're, they've exceeded my expectations. So I'm really appreciative and I agree with Will. I think this is, um, the, the type of, this is, this is the, the front line for how most, many of our constituents interact with government. And I'm just so happy it'll be a more accessible and easily, easy to navigate platform. So thank you.
Yeah. And again, Hannah has been great. She put in a lot of time on it.
And so are we confident enough in Revise that we go all out on the 23rd with a blast about our new website? Or do we want people to find it incrementally?
No, I, we plan to, yeah, do a big announcement and let everyone know about the switch. Yeah, and it's, it's coming along really well. I mean, there seems to be a lot of things that still need to be done, but it's, it's really not like there are things that get updated really quickly. And, um, by then, yeah, I think it'll, everything will be good to go.
Yeah.
I mean, there are obviously going to be a few little bumps and hiccups, but I think for the most part, it'll be ready to go.
Okay.
And it'll be a seamless transition, same URL, same everything. It's just one day it looks like our website, the next day it looks like the new one.
Okay. And so there's not really an interface with Engage. They're really just two separate.
Yeah.
On Board and Engage, are they changing under this?
They're not changing, no. Uh, yeah, Engage Milwaukee is actually, uh, it was part of Bang the Table, which got bought out by Granicus. So like if, but even if we had gone with like Granicus as the web provider, there, it still would have been separate websites. And Revise does have its own, um, kind of like Engage type of platform. Uh, we just haven't gone into it yet just because we already have a contract for Engage Milwaukee for, for a while. So, um, but we were going to look into it to see if there's maybe a way to have a more seamless, um, connection with it.
We are excited on the, the kind of new project page template. I think it will be much clearer. Here's sort of the static or the more static project page. And then here's the link to Engage and here's how you can give us your feedback. And that kind of will work on the backend to make the interface as seamless as possible.
And we're going to have a link for the.
Community development reports. We are mayor. We are.
Okay, good, good. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's exciting. All right. And then our next item is, uh, an update on one of our council goals, economic development. And for that, I invite Assistant City Manager Joseph Brilio and Economic Development Coordinator Ciara Williams.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Joseph Brilio, Assistant City Manager, and I'm joined with, um, our Economic Development Coordinator, Ciara Williams. We're going to go over the quarterly update for our economic development goal. Believe it or not, it's been three months and so we're on the rotation again. And we're going to go through, um, here's how we would like to do it. And if you have adjustments that you'd like to do, just let us know. But our plan tonight is to, we have some slides that are going to speak to what we've accomplished last quarter, what we're going to be looking at this quarter, and then just a kind of a glimpse into the fourth quarter or the end of the year for, for staff and then also for council. And I was going to let, um, Ciara kind of run us through the staff and I was going to talk with you all with, on the council side. But before we got into that as well, hopefully that sounds good, if that doesn't, let us know. We're not going to go into the, the why again, or all the, the metrics, the measure of success. Those are things that we're going to be, we feel like we got direction from you all and we're going to continue to track over the next several quarters and years. So does that sound good? That's, we'll go right to it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Well, with that, I'm gonna, I'll drive. Yeah, but, um, Ciara Williams.
Hello again. So as he said, I'm going to go over the staff actions before I hand it back to Joseph. You can just go to the next slide. So starting with Q2, um, with the staff accomplishments from April through June, with the very first action we did was hiring an economic development coordinator, which was me. Hello again, um, in case you missed it. And then our next action we accomplished in Q2 was continuing to build our relationships with the Downtown Alliance of Milwaukee and North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce. And then the businesses of Milwaukee, which was inactive during Q2, so no engagement with them. But in the last quarter, we had 16 engagements with those folks as well as kind of some one-on-one coffee chats in lieu of the business of Milwaukee not engaging in Q2. And next.
Just wanted to pause here. And this is just the, the, a great effect of having more capacity in Ciara here. I probably, if it was just me, the number of 16 was, would be much, much less. So the fact that we have more people and she's been doing a great job talking to our business community.
Yeah, it's been lots of fun. Okay, and then our Milwaukee Fest engagement. So Dan, um, our events coordinator, um, has been doing the bulk of this work. And they let me know exactly the steps they took to engage our businesses in this last quarter and prior. So that was starting an advisory committee with businesses and residents, as well as, um, having event sponsors, getting, going to DAM and asking for their input and reaching out to businesses for vending opportunities, as well as putting out announcements in the pilot newsletter. And they just sent out street closure notices to everyone who will be affected by the event this weekend. And then in the same vein, we had discussions this last quarter on how to engage businesses in all signature events. And so we had a meeting between our event staff, city management, communications and economic development staff, and discussing how we're going to engage businesses going forward with the rest of the signature events and how that's going to be a collaborative relationship between each of those departments. And we're just starting those conversations, but the gist of it is that we're going to build upon the successes of what I talked about on that last slide, the lessons learned from Milwaukee Fest. And then an additional action we added that we did in the last quarter was doing a public parking map thanks to Jordan Imlaw, our Communications Manager, to try and get ahead of some of the parking panic that might come with the increased business activity and all the summer events. So this is up on our webpage, which highlights the four public parking lots and how many spaces they have, as well as highlighting the park and rides and transit lines that come through Milwaukee.
I heard that this was coming, but I had not seen it. So it is already up on the website?
Yes, it's on the economic development downtown webpage.
And we have put it out on social media once, but I think we should do it again this week with Milwaukee Fest.
Before Milwaukee Fest?
Yeah.
I'll also note, this is kind of the, the easier to understand public parking map. We have, if you want to get real wonky and into the weeds, we do have also like a parking map that also, not just parking lots, but also on-street times and, and everywhere in downtown. So if someone wanted to know where to hour, one hour, 15 minute, we have it broken down to that, that degree. And that's on our parking webpage, mostly for permits, but.
And then also we had our quarterly MRCAC meeting this quarter. And we discussed an amendment, which I think we got an update on, um, a couple of months ago, when Joseph was out, where there was an amendment to the retroactive grants feature, which is no longer going to be back until January of 2023. It is going to be a moving target of 90 days. And then the other big discussion point was the anti-displacement grant, where we will be re-termining it to make it a more approachable and a name that people are aware of what it entails. And then hopefully doing some more storytelling and marketing around that program to get some interest. And then this quarter, our last quarter, we issued eight grants and we dispersed, that is all the funding, and 19 total grants since August of last year. And there are still with that, with $0 left, three in the pipeline. And so, oh, what is that? Does that mean a question?
Goose means question. Finish your thought and then.
Um, and so there will be a request to the Milwaukee Development Commission to re-up funding to that program here in the next month or so.
And can you remind me, is that 600,000 for the biennium? Is it for the year? Is it for Q2?
It was for the biennium.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So we're, it's, we're completely exhausted what we thought we'd do in two years. Or really a year and a half, we've completely exhausted within 10 months.
We plan to bring a budget adjustment, uh, for consideration to the Budget Committee related to this because this is, this is a great problem to have. Demand has been so high. It's incredible that you've been able to issue 19 in, you know, nine months. I, the fund is healthy. The fund continues to be healthy. So I, I think the Finance Director and I feel comfortable allocating more in this biennium so we don't lose the momentum. But of course, that's your decision as the budget authority for the MRC.
Yeah, and when we, when I put together the budget for this, I had no idea. Like, I, just 600,000 sounded kind of good. Like that sounded like it could be a good, a good number to shoot for. Because I wasn't sure how much interest and what would be happening downtown or in the URA at the time. So, uh, this wasn't like built on something that we knew for sure. Yeah, this is, this is a great, great problem, as City Manager Sager said.
When you do come back for a budget adjustment, I'd be curious to forecast out what this looks like in future bienniums. And like, I see those 19 grants, we've had a lot of new development in our downtown. And I don't know, maybe I'm naive to say that we won't see that level of development sustained over time, but maybe we will. And so I think forecasting that might be helpful as we consider the totality of the URA funds.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think, um, as we do come in August to talk about a budget adjustment, the three in the pipeline, three is a small number. Uh, the three that are in the pipeline are actually pretty huge, um, in the sense that they have multiple suites. They're large spaces. Actually, there's somebody in the audience that, maybe, maybe, uh, taking place or taking part in one of them. And so it might be three, but actually the way that it will impact downtown could be like half a block, actually, because it encompasses multiple business suites. So we're happy to help forecast what we can based on what we think we have in the pipeline. Also, every time we do a grant, that actually locks that space up for the most part for five years. So we don't want just, if a business doesn't, isn't successful and goes out of business after, you know, 12 months, 18 months, two years, we can't just be reoccurring funding into the same space. We kind of want improvement to happen and be there for a while before, and then let others take advantage of the program before coming back to that same spot. And that's, that can be adjusted. That was just the original intent of the program. So I say that because, um, every, every success story that we have should kind of lock it in place for five years, you know, and freeze that. So for forecasting purposes, that, that property goes off for, for several years.
My, I guess last thing would be, I'd be curious, when you do come back, to also have information about where those 19 grants are happening, especially if they're locked in place. Our URA extends to like 32nd and Harrison. And I'd be curious if we're seeing, um, grants distributed out there? If there are grants that are going to Milwaukee Marketplace outside of just, I know many grants happening downtown, but understanding the full context of the URA. And then I think that can help us scope out the impact of grants in the future and where they might come.
Yeah, that's great. Easy.
Totally. Um, have you talked about the grant? Have you made sure that the people who are leasing the commercial space in Axle Tree know about the grants? And they're making that known to potential tenants?
Yeah, I don't know about the latter, how often, how much they're, they're marketing it. But yeah, they were made aware of this program even before it was.
Up and running.
Yeah, up and running, yeah. They have, they've had plenty of runway there. But wouldn't hurt to circle back and see where they're at.
And are you going to come to the CET money and grants beyond downtown? Or is that, um, that's still to come? Okay.
That's actually a little bit later in the presentation. Anything else on how successful and amazing this program has been and Ciara's help?
Oh, there's a couple more slides.
Okay.
This is kind of a little off topic, but, uh, I heard that in, in one of the storefront improvements that was going on, on 21st Avenue, we had some, uh, we found some, uh, infrastructure issues. Are those, um.
Yeah.
Resolved?
Uh, I'm going to jump to the next slide.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's no secret, uh, this, this 10951 21st Avenue, this tenant improvement, they did a curb cut and they found there was some void or some space in between the sidewalk and, um, yeah, basically the sidewalk had dropped, there'd been some, there's airspace that is, uh, between the sidewalk and the dirt between. So like either the compaction didn't last or there's been some erosion over the years. We're not sure exactly what happened. Uh, we're still figuring that out. But yes, there has been a little bit of, um, uh, void space created underneath the sidewalk and a little bit out into the street, but not, not much, come to find out. It's mostly under the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I was worried about the buses and, you know, heavy trucks that come out of Milwaukee lumber and all of that.
Our Public Works Director has, um, feels very confident that it's, the street is fine.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, it looks nice what they're doing there. It's exciting.
Want to provide?
Sure, yeah. We just provided this slide to show some examples of what the storefront program has been able to do. So you can see there on the proposed section, um, of what the proposed projects were when we approved the grant funds and what it currently is. The pictures at the bottom are what's in progress right now. That is a photo from today for one of them and then a few weeks back for good measure. And then tenant improvements. Chan Stakery is one of our tenant improvement recipients. And they're in the midst of their, um, project. I think it's due to wrap up, uh, there's September, I believe. So should be seeing the final fruition of that grant soon.
And what, what were they doing? Just.
They're, they're updating their, their internal, I mean, if you.
The kitchen or the actual aesthetics of the restaurant?
Yeah, mostly aesthetics. And also, um, they were creating an additional suite to the front to allow for another use. But yeah, it's mostly cosmetic and interior adjustments.
Then our one and only pre-development grant so far was the Waldorf School. And this is for, um, the site plan that they're studying for, at least, um, for their new childcare center. And they have a few other additions to the property, which is like a new parking and drop-off space and performance and arts space as well.
So they're building, they're going to build on their property?
Yeah, the pre-development, um, dollars were for the, the early childcare center and primarily because it would offer a childcare during the day for, for all, for anyone. And so they're, they're looking at the, would be the south side, southwest corner of their property to potentially develop there. And so they're doing some.
Great.
Some soft costs, or really the, the geotech, the, um, architectural conceptual, uh, and trying to get their, their ducks to notice how much it's going to cost.
Great, that's, that's exciting.
And then a stink peek at some in the pipeline.
You already had it.
Thank you, Nick. Um, the Rexall Building is one of the projects in the pipeline for when we, when, if we re-up the funding, as well as the Milwaukee Museum. We have funded part of their project now and the rest will have to come at a later point. They're upgrading the exterior and interior. And then another thing accomplished in Q2, Joseph can add more to this, but was re-engaging on the Harrison and Main Lot discussion, which was presented at a city council meeting earlier this quarter. Anything else you want to talk about?
That's great.
Okay, okay. All right, and then.
Sorry, one last question on the grants. The mayor mentioned Axel Train. It got me thinking about, have we engaged with Hillside at all? I know they have some plans in phase one for mixed use and then in phase two. Have we talked with those folks at all about how our grants might support development there?
Not, not with any specificity. We've talked to them about, they're in the URA and so they have the ability to reach to these grants, but we haven't talked to them about what that could be.
But they're not doing any mixed use in phase one, right?
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's been, it's been talked about in many different ways. So.
I mean, I know at, at one point, yeah, there was some talk that at least the building up along 32nd would have some other use on ground floor, but I thought they decided it would be.
That's my last understanding too, but I would just say like, at the end of the day, we'll see what happens. And if there is another type of use, they could certainly pursue these funds.
I went back to, I was questioning which version of history I remembered. And it looks like they have community-centered ground floor use on one of their buildings. Right now in the master plan, it says a commercial ground floor on the A2 building, so the one on 32nd. And I think that might have been changed. But in future iterations, they have commercial.
Yeah. And the other phases, we'll see, they still, even in the master plan, they'll change some things up as far as what makes sense and where, what kind of funding they can get and what kind of partners. So there'll still be some changes. That's why I say we'll see, they're aware of, um, that they're in the URA and there's opportunity there. But, uh, what will actually be built and what type of uses will be involved in those buildings at some, some point is still, um, not fully ironed out.
But if people haven't heard, um, they're actually opening earlier than we thought they were. They're all, uh, they're going to open the first building, the furthest one from 32nd in November. So we had a thing in the pilot a month or two ago that had some dates and they're actually moving, opening like two, two to three months earlier than those dates that were in the pilot. So that's amazing. They're coming in, have schedule and under budget.
It's impressive. It doesn't happen, yeah. Cool. Looking ahead.
Yep, now look at what we're going to do this next quarter. We are due to present and refine the scope of work for the Main Street CIP projects. And so that draft charter was in progress, last I checked. We're going to do an internal review of it next before we go and get city council feedback and then create a strategy on how we do business communications during those. And then create a strategy on how we do business communications during those C I P improvements to the Main Street.
And those are expected to happen next summer.
Yeah. All right, and we are also producing the first annual Milwaukee Fest this quarter, and that is this weekend. I hope to see everybody there. And yes, as alluded to earlier, the C E T grants, we're preparing for the launch of the citywide grants. So that budget stuff behind the scene and then creating new grant materials, we're in the middle of that now. And then updating the webpage once the new site goes live. And doing some storytelling using the pilot newsletter and a business newsletter about the citywide launch and the launch of the second round of funding to come.
Sorry, I just have a quick question. The C E T grants, are those still gonna, are those gonna be available to? The businesses in the U R A, even though U R A has its own funding?
Yeah, no, it's outside the U R A, everything outside.
So on those. I had, I went in and met the women who opened the new Two Sisters. Cafe and it's lovely. I encourage everyone to go stop by and. I didn't, I had a baked good, which was delicious. I haven't had a meal there yet, but I think they're, I think they're gonna do well. They do have some interest in doing some expansion. Apparently, there's some part of that building. That they could knock out a wall and reuse and expand. So I did tell them about the that these grants were coming. So hopefully they will, you know, I haven't heard, I left with my card, I haven't heard anything more, but. Anyway, I mean, I think that's a great, great potential there, so.
They got a great write-up too in Oregonian.
They did, they did, yeah, yeah.
I am, Sierra's gonna be reaching out to them shortly, actually.
I know that we ran over budget in our U R A grants. Do you have any sense of what the C E T grants are gonna look like or what the demand would look like there? I know we're not seeing the same. Development happening outside of our U R A, but I'm still. Interested.
That's a good question, Council President. I I don't. I don't know. I actually don't have a good, good sense. I was surprised, obviously, with six hundred thousand dollars going as quickly as it did, just within the U R A. I would imagine six hundred K would probably go pretty fast too outside of the U R A. But we'll see. Yeah, I don't know. Do you have any sense?
Yeah, I guess as long as we're getting the word out. I know we've had inquiries from places on Thirty Second and now maybe the Two Sisters Cafe, so. I don't imagine that it would be hard to give out free-ish money.
Right, yeah.
Well, whenever we check back on these metrics again, it would be helpful to see. I love seeing the grant progress and understanding that in the U R A and outside in C E T, I think would be really interesting to continue to track.
Yeah, and I think to your earlier point, it'll be interesting to see where that. That drive goes or where the actual demand is coming from, what part of the city is there is there more uncertain? Is there clusters, you know? I imagine there will be, especially because people talk, that's how they find out about.
Right.
Grants.
Speaking of grants, I'm sure I know the answer to this, but like, say, for example, the bigger companies, like, we're not giving grants to Safeway. New Seasons, right? We're doing small, like, small business businesses only, right? Like, they can't apply Planet Fitness and these bigger business, chain businesses can't apply for these things.
Yeah, good question. That's what the Mercak, yeah, settled on for the U R A, and so we were going to, we're replicating that same program. Those programmatic elements.
We had, we had discussion about that in the committee. And the consensus was that franchised. Franchised businesses over, I think, I can't remember how many locations. But we had specified that it would be available for for businesses that were smaller, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't feel comfortable giving like Rite Aid and Safeway ten improvement dollars. Any other questions on C E T related grants? Bike racks.
Microphone, microphone. Sorry. Thank you. That we've added for Q three is formalizing our bike rack process for requesting, approving and installing racks. We have installed. Maybe like six in the past quarter, but there's not really a process for a formalized process for how we go about that. So we're creating internal. Standard operating procedures as well as a form that will go on the new website once it's up. And that those photos are us going out there to scope what the bike racks are gonna look like outside of frame. So we have those ordered. It's gonna be twenty four new bike parking spaces outside of frame.
Oh, good, good. I was there on a weekday morning recently and some big crew of people on bikes came in and it was like. They were just, you know. Locking them to the signs and the benches and everything else. So, yeah, I'm glad to hear there's parking coming there.
Yeah, and it might not, formalizing a process might not sound exciting, but it's just, it's making our, the city more efficient. We do have people that reach out all the time and go. How can I get something? Like whether it's a bike rack or another city service potentially. And we just, we've had a lot of requests for bike racks over the years and just at one point we did have a like somewhat of a process and then we didn't and it kind of went away and then. Thanks to Sierra and Ryan Dyer in planning and Addy in engineering, we've, they've kind of come together to create this little super group of creating a process and. Following design standards, marking where they're allowed to go on in a public right of way and making it more user friendly. So. Good work so far and it's been, it's cool to see.
Is that a is that a cost that the city's taken on? Or is that a cost that the businesses are having to?
Yes.
That's a city cost?
That's a city cost.
Okay, good. Because I know Milwaukee Cafe and Bottle Shop. Mentioned something about bike racks before, so I'm glad that it's not something that we're passing on to the businesses.
Yeah, it's part of, there is, it's part of obviously the overall city goals and especially our climate action plan, but also. You can add the T S P to it and even the U R A can certainly, you speak to some of this as a goal. So. It's about creating other options to to use the U R A and get into the space. And as far as. Providing. We don't have unlimited funds, so like, it's not like we can, we can do this forever, but we can certainly do it for while supplies last, so to speak, yeah.
Well, and I think, I mean, most of the places you're talking about, you're putting them in public right of way, right? I mean, it's a different thing than putting them at Milwaukee Marketplace.
Correct. Yeah, good point, Mayor. We did have someone reach out, actually not too long ago, and ask for bike racks, but. There was no right of way that it really worked in as far as the spacing requirements. And so the option was either was sorry, either nothing in the private, the public right of way, or you can put one on your private property, but we won't be. Doing that for you. So that's just the way it goes. Council President?
I know if Jay is watching, he will be very excited to see this, so.
I've thought about Jay when I, especially with this one. He's been talking about bike corral or bike corral parking.
Yeah, I guess in honor of Jay, a few questions. Are you providing kind of design standards? I know. Constant critique of like the new seasons is that bike rack is unusable because of the way they put it out. Are you providing like standards to make sure that they're actually usable and spaced properly?
Yeah, there are some spacing requirements. When it comes to multiple, like bike staples and spacing. I don't know that we have a standard besides going out and testing it ourselves. Unless you can speak more to us here.
Private bike rack standards in the, and our planners use, and we're kind of following the same concept for our use. And our planners are kind of keeping us on the straight and narrow in terms of. Or engineers first off, creating the five foot ADA pathway and then the planners giving us the input on how much. Bike maneuverability space is required on either side, and that's all going in our. S O P, our internal standard operating procedures, so we know when to go out to market to follow those kind of guidelines to make it usable and. I have tried to push for some artsier bike racks, but have gotten pushback on. That they're not as usable, as functional, and I think that's important for the end user, of course, so. We are taking that into account.
I'm a sucker for a cute little bike rack.
We feel like there's, there's, there's some art potential here too. There is some, there is some placemaking that can be involved in bike racks. I think this spot in particular is exciting in the bike rack world because it does provide a little, you know, a little parklet, so to speak, of. Bike parking, but also some special placemaking just outside frame.
If you do have that internal best practices, if you're getting inquiries that are outside the public right of way, I think sharing that still, like, I imagine if Kimco had that. Guidelines for designing the new seasons bike racks, that maybe would have resulted in a better end product, or I think it is helpful to share at the very least.
I actually think that might have been our standards over there, most likely, yeah. But sometimes they have the option to, that we give them options and when, where to place them for what makes sense for their operations and. In the end, it doesn't necessarily make the most sense, which is unfortunate in some cases.
The other question I have, there are bike racks that frequently will get blocked by things. I think about the one on the corner right here that's blocked by a lot of potted plants. Are there? Is there something in our code that prevents for that or some things that we could do to make sure we're not just adding bike racks, but we're keeping available the ones that we already have?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a code enforcement conversation.
We have one that's blocked by potted plants in front of a coffee shop or something?
Frequently, you'll hear on a lot of bike Milwaukee rides, they'll grumble about it as we bike by, but over in front of. I'm forgetting the crossroads here, but it's right by the asparagus farm.
Windhorse.
Yep, blocked one there. So it would be lovely to clear out a little.
Free up the bike rack. Free the bike rack.
Excellent bike rack conversation. Yes, I am excited about this. Thanks, Sierra, for putting some some form to it.
Okay, and then with the website refresh, in Q three, we will also be doing a webpage refresh, which I know, Will, I agree with you. When you said that some of the project pages are a little hard to navigate, so I'm gonna be taking a look at how the economic development webpages are flowing as well as updating the grants webpage specifically. And then branding and marketing, in this next quarter, we're gonna begin a conversation internally on on the city's brand and marketing strategy, whether that includes. Swag or how we engage businesses with that brand and strategy. This is very early concepts of an idea, and so we're gonna start that conversation soon.
Oh, have you still got a question?
And then sneak peek for Q four staff preview, October through December. That's when the neighborhood hubs and corridor plans will begin scoping the planning and work for that. As well as engaging the businesses in the next U R A update and then initiating the market analysis around the neighborhood hubs. And launching the citywide grant program, which probably was more likely to happen in this next quarter than Q four, but.
It's gonna be a busy quarter. And any other questions for staff? Because then we're gonna move on to kind of council, council side for the next. Cool, great. Thanks, Sierra.
I guess one last question I have, with the five year action plan, I know our baseline is twenty eight point four percent completion. Are we resetting that when we redo the five year action plan or how does that kind of scale? And I'm a little bit curious, like, what the benchmarks are year over year to get to that hundred percent completion goal that we have.
Yeah, it's all the the projects called out at the end of. All the projects called out in the action plan is essentially how we've been doing it. So as as we check off a project or program, like the grants were one of them. Actually, the grants were, the way we did T I storefront improvement, predevelopment, there's about three, you know, three check marks or three programs that were called out in the. Action plan. So every time we accomplish something, we're essentially saying that's complete. I think there was fourteen projects off the top of my head. I don't have the document in front of me, Council President, but. Every time we have one checked off, that's essentially something that we can. Move on from and we've been, we know that we have till twenty seven to to knock them all out. I mean, the goal is to hundred percent. However, there's still some things that are so dependent on other things, like Coho Development. The T S P finishing up and a couple of other things in order for for us to accomplish them. So there there will likely be some action items or. On the action plan that will likely not be fulfilled, or at least not to the level that was initially hoped for.
Yeah, and maybe no action now, but an open curiosity for having this discussion more at length in a future quarter.
Great, cool. Thanks, Sierra. Good job. Moving on to council. So what happened last last quarter? You all helped give us some direction by creating the economic development goal, providing the metrics and the measures, and then also. Staff and council actions. Looking ahead to this quarter, there's a couple of things we need, want to talk about. And get your kind of conversation among yourselves and we can help with that conversation. But these are the, this is the list of essentially what we hope to support council in endeavoring on. Number one being identify and sending invitations for the first round of business engagement tables and survey. I think what staff is looking for here is how we can support that. Where do you want to focus? If you want to do hit all of these in the next, next quarter, that's. All these by being like the U R A, North Milwaukee Industrial Area or Innovation Area. International Way and other neighborhood businesses. Obviously, the scope can keep going, but if you, if there are specific business clusters you want to hit or if you have. An idea of where you want to focus your attention over the next quarter. And then we can, it's not like you have to do everything this quarter. You can also spread it out over quarters, but getting some direction there. This is an idea that. Council is really excited about. Providing direction on recapitalizing the U R A grant program. So that's kind of goes back to what we already talked about. It just means adding more money into the grant funds so that we can fund more grants and keep going with momentum that we have. Connecting with existing business improvement grantees, so those that have been awarded grants and. This concept came up as we were talking to Council Stavon George about maybe, maybe developing council connections to these grantees just to say. How was it? And is there, is there ways in which we can continue to to improve this program? Are there ways that we can continue to? Expand the program? Are there things that? And what you know now, are there, are there best practices that we should try to incorporate? Any other just feedback and also just creating that relationship with the business community? I mean, if there's other parts of that, Council Stavon, Stavon George, you can certainly. Add to it if you want.
Do you want me to weigh in now or do you want to finish?
I'll just finish that one bullet and then we can. And the last one being share updates on the committee assignments, work related to economic development. Now, it's just like ongoing, so. Any, any of your, your committees that you're appointed to or a part of that is related to economic development, making sure that we take the time to share those updates. As a part of it too.
Thank you. So what came to mind for me as a member of the committee, but also as our family owns one of the businesses that has benefited from these grants. Is really about amplifying the. The story of Milwaukee with the common messaging points. So we've gotten some really amazing coverage of individual businesses and lists have come out saying like, these are some great places to stop by. But it often seems like. You know, after the grant is awarded and after businesses open and they, you know, they're in the flurry of all of this, there's not. There's not a dedicated kind of check back in to say, how can we? How can we share the stories and how can we as members of council and, you know, in partnership with some of the messaging that the city does? You know, really kind of. Really highlight. More, more depth, I guess, around the businesses that are across our whole community. I mean, I. So personally, I remember seeing, you know, it's a thrill to see your own business listed, you know, in a publication that goes out regionally. But I was reading through the list, like, what about this business and this business and this business? And they weren't listed. But yet they've been here in the community for a very long time or have also weathered. Much stronger economic waves than some of the businesses, ours included, that are just, you know, starting up at the, at this. At this like cresting wave in Milwaukee's history. So, you know, I was just kind of thinking about. How we might be able to do some, some like mutual branding and storytelling to just amplify. All of the businesses in the city. I think it also, I think sometimes with the success of the U R A grants, those can make. A bigger splash occasionally, and I'm excited to see that funding go out into other areas of the city. Because there are some really wonderful. Communities and community hubs and businesses that would be able to access those funds and and spread this across. The entirety of our community and not just in the downtown core. We are interacting with so many people who have just come to Milwaukee for the first time. And constantly, I mean, I feel like, I feel like. It's almost like we have a travel desk, you know, down at the front. like we have a travel desk, you know, down at the front counter. Really, hey, have you been to Milwaukee before? What brings you to town? What else are you seeing? Let me give you directions up to the marketplace, you know? Here's where you can get an ice cream sundae. Here's, here are five places you can get an ice cream sundae. So it, I don't know, we're just, I think, having more of that direct connection to the, to the storytelling and the information that people are hungry for, as they're visiting our city for the first time, makes me think a lot more about the role that, you know, we can play individually and collectively, and in sharing our story.
Thank you, council. If you're mayor, if I'm, can I just piggyback real quick?
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, I think it is, there's also a cool component to this, is this is, this is the city and business really partnering in, in a way that we haven't done. And so we should, we should feel proud about the support we've been able to give businesses, and what we're continuing to pursue. And so like, when, breaking those connections with the business owners that we've already supported is, is, it's great from the staff side. It certainly goes even further when they see you come through the door and feel actually connected in a, a part of their business in a way. Like, I think of Luna's, who we've given grand dollars for, for the equipment that helped expand their ice cream, and so they can actually produce more ice cream, because there's more, they've had more demand. They couldn't do that as soon as they wanted without this, these dollars. And we should be all proud of that. And so when you go in there and go, ask them questions, and also feel that connection, hopefully, and help them feel that connection, I think would go beeps and bounds to expanding brand, and the support, and the culture that we're trying to create, which is business friendly, and open to ideas, opportunities.
So I guess I'm, I'm hearing a few different things here. One is, when I saw this bullet, I thought, oh, we'll do a walking tour, and we'll, you know, we can all go together, or we can go in groups of, in a couple, you know, if we don't want to have a quorum, we can go in twos, or whatever, and do a little walking tour and talk to people. But, so that's one piece of it. I mean, you know, some of us have patronized a lot of the businesses, some of us, you know, maybe haven't patronized as many, or whatever. But, but then this idea of promoting them, is there sort of like the role of the city in promoting them? There's the role of DAM for the downtown businesses in promoting them? There's what we can do individually? I guess I, I'm a little, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around, you know, what that looks like? Or is it just being suggested that we should all do more of that on our own, whatever platforms we use, or whatever?
I think that's the question. Yeah, I think that's exactly it.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just jump in, I think this is, this is exactly what we, you know, we, with our whole vision with these goals of there being staff actions and council actions, we kind of want you guys to talk among yourselves and come up with how you want to actionize these ideas, and sort of who's on what, and what the marching orders are. We've talked to Councilor Stavenger, who's the lead on this. I think she's got some great ideas, but that's what we wanted the rest of this session, I think, to be, is you guys discussing what makes sense to you, and how we can support you.
Okay, Council President.
After getting done the legislative session, and working with a cons director for the first time, I've thought a lot about, like, how do you generate news stories, and how do you get coverage? And I've loved seeing the coverage that Milwaukee, like you're alluding to, Rebecca, all the businesses are getting recently. I'd be so, I'm happy to help with this in any ways, but if you're interested in, like, thinking about how we can help get press attention for what's been happening, how do we, like you're talking about here, how do we tell the stories of what's been happening about Milwaukee? I think that that would be a really fun thing that we could do. And I know some folks in the state legislature who do this professionally, so we could lean on them to see how we can continue to generate that regional storytelling about our city. So maybe that's my one contribution to this, as Emma's asking for.
Okay. Counselor Massey?
Thank you. This is nothing new. I kind of struggled with this for a while. Trying to understand and get my arms around, you know, our relationship specifically with the North Milwaukee Industrial Area and International Way. Because all of our, the work that you've described, and it's all good work, you know, tend to be more, you know, retail focused, you know, customers, you know, business owners, with our residents are folks, you know, visiting for, you know, farmer's market, and up and down Main Street, and that kind of thing, which is all good. And so I kind of struggle with what that engagement, what that relationship is, with these larger industrial, commercial organizations are. And so I, you know, I just, I, I don't know what that relationship is, or, or anything like that. And I'm, I'm, you know, I certainly want to hear those kinds of things, because I think that there's, there's some benefits from, you know, having, you know, those, you know, in many, in some cases, large, you know, multinational organizations more closely identifying with Milwaukee. Because I'm not sure there's a really close connection to a lot of those places, you know? And so like, you know, if you go to Meggitt, they're not, you know, you know, selling the ice cream cones like Luna is, you know, they're, they're selling, you know, aerospace products to NASA, and power control equipment to the Bonneville, you know, Power Authority, and that kind of thing. And so, I don't know, I'm just asking a question, what, you know, what is that engagement? What is that relationship? What, what do we want it to be?
I'd like us to, I feel like we've got two of these bullets that we need to talk about. I think the second bullet and the fourth bullet are kind of, they're taken care of, right? We need to talk about the first and the third. And so we were mostly talking about the third, but you're bringing in the first. Let's pick one and talk it through, and then move to the other one. So I'm happy to go to the first bullet, if that's where people want to go. Or do we want to finish up on the sort of third bullet? I guess, yeah, okay. Yeah. So on the third bullet, any other thoughts or any more clarification after sort of the comments that you got, that, that you want to offer?
I guess maybe just one suggestion. I think that there might be some common, commonalities when we engage with businesses of all sizes around the council goals, you know? And we have some defined goals, we have some defined work in these areas, so that might be a good place to touch base, you know? And we also have some, you know, really strong values as a city around things like sustainability, around things like equity. And when we have conversations with businesses, you know, and I think about, like, the difference between an ice cream cone and something that's going to the moon, a little bit different. But how those are produced, the values that are represented in the production of those items, the way that those businesses conduct themselves and connect with our community, I think there's some, some commonality in storytelling that we could see ourselves in. And I, I think it's just, you know, just something that I'm remarking on, as it's been more eye-opening to me, to be more connected to the foot traffic and the people who are visiting the city, and then pairing that with some of the larger conversations that we've had with, with large businesses that call Milwaukee home as well. Just, it seems like an opportunity. So I don't, I don't.
Okay, I want to know on number three, what you would, what would be our tasks? What tasks would you give us? Or what task would you enumerate for us collectively or individually to take up?
Well, number three refers to businesses that have received.
The grants.
The grants, not large businesses that are producing things that go to the moon. So the, the things that I would do personally, or the things that I would ask, you know, for partners on, would be to connect with those business owners, and ask them, how are things going now that you have received the grant? What, if you're, if you have experienced that influx of cash, what, what's happening now? I mean, I would ask specifically, how did June treat you? Because June was pretty rough. And a lot of people that I have talked to that are downtown have shared that.
June was pretty rough?
Yeah, just profits in June were low.
Even though there was a lot of people.
And even though there were a lot of people, but it was sporadic. The trends were not there, the foot traffic was not there as much. And, and it could be for a lot of different reasons. I think that people prepare for that, and sometimes you can't prepare for these things. So I'm having more in-depth conversations about the reality of doing business in Milwaukee, because I just am closer to it now. So I think that would be one thing that I guess I would suggest. I think it makes sense for council to talk to local businesses about council goals. Certainly, this seems like an easy one, because it's economic development, but we have other council goals that I think that they would be interested in. I've, I've heard from other businesses that they're very interested in talking about the hillside development, and affordable housing, and, and how many more people will be coming to downtown? Is it walkable? Will we, you know, the bike infrastructure is one part of it, but maybe families are going to have multiple children. And so then, you know, what are the conversations councils having around transportation enhancements? Things, things like, things like that, I think, would be a natural nexus between our work and the work of the business community.
And are you suggesting individually, or collectively, we go have these conversations?
Well, I think that might touch on the first bullet point, which is engagement tables and ways to survey. So I think, I, I want to respect the, the pull to take us to that first point on the slide. But I think there's a lot of opportunity to see, to check in with business grantees and see how things are going now. So I guess those would be my, my wrap-up comments on the third point. I think we have a great vehicle and a great opportunity in the first point around creating more engagement opportunities. A survey is one thing, but a survey is one-way communication, and hopefully, we hear the return communication on that. But often, we don't. I mean, I don't, it's hard to even check emails right now. Even with June as it was, it was still felt so chaotic. And so I think it might take some, some more direct communication. It's great that we have the Downtown Alliance, it's great that we have had some engagement from the business of Milwaukee. I mean, I, I still hear people talk about how great the Small Business Saturday was, you know, when Millie went around and visited a bunch of small businesses, and they got little shout outs, and it was a fun way to engage. I heard from residents, you know, this was even before we opened our business, that, you know, they, they just never really, you know, realized how fun it could be to engage, you know, with businesses across town. And that, that was pretty cool. It's not a survey, but you do get a lot of feedback around something like that.
Okay, so it seems like we've pivoted to the first question. So following up on Counselor Massey's sort of point about how we engage the bigger guys, and is engaging the bigger, you know, the, the people sending equipment to the moon versus the ice cream maker? I mean, I do think they're different tables, personally. I think you've kind of identified them there. They're probably, you know, they don't have the same interests. I mean, we have some same messaging maybe about Milwaukee, and being open for business, and wanting to engage, and all of that. But it does seem to me, and I will just say, having been through the NMIA planning process, it is hard to get them to engage. I think that is, that is a hard thing. But to me, the NMIA and the International Way are the priority there. Because I do feel like, between the URA work, the grant work, and DAM, and Business of Milwaukee, I feel like, let's let the URA percolate a little bit, and let's focus on those areas that we haven't focused on. Personally, that's my, that's my feeling about that.
What I'm, to try and stitch these together, I'm hearing, like, three different things. There's, like Rebecca had mentioned, a conversation with URA grant recipients about their stories, the impact. If you're looking for help on that, I would love to join in. Part two is kind of like the tables that you're talking about. And I think what I'm hearing is two separate tables. There's one with the large industrial players in our city, trying to convene a table to engage them, knowing that engagement has been tricky. And then the second table is DAM, and the Business of Milwaukee, more of the retail shops convening them to, like you were saying earlier, Mayor, or maybe this was Counselor Stavenger, around our goals and the work we're doing as a city. How do they relate to it, and how can we engage them? So those three kind of, as we think about, what is council doing, it's those three things. An industrial table, a retail table, and URA grant storytelling? Is that inaccurate?
So I feel like the, personally, I feel like the tables need to be smaller and more granular. I feel like North Milwaukee is one thing with one set of interests and issues and transportation and everything else. And International Way is another. And businesses in downtown are a different thing than businesses along King Road. I personally think it's more, it's more segregated. And as Joseph said, we can't do them all in one quarter. But how do we, how do we start tackling them?
So maybe, maybe to help kind of summarize, I think I'm hearing, just kind of what you were saying, Council President, but I think really, it's an NMIA conversation, an International Way conversation, and URA grantee conversations. And I've heard Council President Anderson express a desire to support on the URA grant applications. To your point, Mayor, if, kind of, the precedent I think we've set with stuff like this is if we want to avoid the quorum issue, we kind of appoint two counselors to sort of be the leads to go do something and report back. So throwing something out there, could Counselor Stavenger, as the ACDEV lead, work with Council President Anderson on that third bullet, the connecting with the existing business improvement grantees? And then, on the NMIA table, and the International Way table, I guess kind of similar question. Are there two folks who want to partner, or one person who wants to take each of those tables, and then you want to talk about what the steps are that, that make that happen? I see your nameplate is up.
Yeah, I need a goose. I don't know what to do. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, the Council President has a whole flock of geese, so he could share.
Yeah, to add, I was trying to figure out ways to make it helpful. I, I think that third bullet, my recommendation to you to reflect would be just keep it, keep it simple, keep it easy. There's, there's 19 grantees, but really, the amount that have open stores right now that are available to have a conversation and walk-in are probably around nine or 10, maybe. So I feel like just going in, making those connections organically would go, would go far. Even if you don't think that having the mayor, or council president, or council as part of your name, it actually carries a lot of weight, just to walk in and say, I'm Counselor Massey. Nice to meet you. Heard you got a grant. That's awesome.
So send us the list.
Yeah, absolutely.
We haven't, I haven't seen the list, so yeah.
Certainly. So that would just be my recommendation there. I appreciate City Manager Sager's conversation, or recommendations for the first bullet. I would also just add that we're talking a lot about sending invitations and having around, like a table and engagement around a table. Sometimes those can be difficult to create, as the mayor said, just getting people to actually come to something outside of their business. So another way to also think about that is just business engagement in general. So as we've done with Meggitt, which is great, like, we could potentially set up business visits on their hours, their day. I think it's really important to go at a time that is beneficial to them, and not make them come to something that we're doing. So I think that there's another way to also do this work, is doing like one-on-one kind of business tours, or, you know, quick little interactions that makes it, like even over a lunch and learn, or something along those lines. So there's other ways to think about it, besides just tabling, or asking them to come to an event, or something that's bigger than maybe it needs to be. Just a thought.
So I will say, I mean, I think it makes sense that you pick a few businesses in an, in say, let's say, International Way, and go meet with them to try and figure out what's the common conversation topics, and what you would talk about at a roundtable. But I still see some value in, in trying to convene a roundtable. Because in International Way, you've got big companies, and you've got small companies, you know? You've got You've got a lot of different sizes. You just don't have, you know, sort of walk up retail. But yeah, I mean, I'm all in for doing that. I mean, I was, that found it very useful when we went to Meggitt, when Counselor Massey and I went to Meggitt, and I'm happy to do more of that. But I do still feel like the goal should be, and you know, I do know from my Planning Commission days, there is a loose association along International Way because they all came out when they didn't like something that Planning Commission was going to do. So there were some people who, not, I mean, not all, but the ones at that end, which the thing they didn't like was where Breakside is. So there was, there were, there was some amount of an association back then. I don't know, is there still any kind of an association? And so maybe picking a couple businesses in there to try and suss that out and suss out what the issues are for them. Yeah, I'm all in for for being part of that. Counselor Kostrovati, I guess, if we're up first.
Yeah, I, I would agree with what Joseph was saying too. I mean, it's, it's great on the third bullet that we assign two people for more formal discussions, but that shouldn't prevent or stop any of us from going in there and having our own conversations. We all have social media, we all have pages for the most part. We could be in there making social media videos. I mean, we could even dedicate, you know, we tend to speak a lot. We tend to be out there a lot. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to every other month, instead of a council corner pilot article, we highlight a business or we talk about multiple businesses. Or the council member uses their article to discuss the businesses and and highlight some of this stuff. I don't, I don't see it that we, every month, we have to have a.
We did have some business highlights in the pilot in the past, and I don't know the story about why those stopped. That would be a good question for Jordan and people. But I mean, we did do some of that with the pilot in the past.
We should continue. I mean, it'd be great to pick up, pick that up. And on the first bullet, yeah, I mean, it's going to start with us going in there and introducing ourselves and meeting them. And 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 from there, I agree, we do need to have more engagement tables. It doesn't have to be here at City Hall. We can make it a little bit different and we can meet them at their location if they're more comfortable with that. But I do think the engagement tables are important. Like Counselor Stavendor said, the surveys, I'm not too keen on just because it's like, what is, do we really think the industrial parks are going to really participate in that? Or would they be more interested in an open discussion with council members and with our economic development team? But I think it starts with us making that approach and and saying, hey, this is who we are. We'd love to come and just like you guys did with Meggitt. Start with that and then move into the engagement tables. And just because, you know, if if three or four businesses decide, oh, well, we're not going to join that discussion, it doesn't mean we don't do it. It just means we try again the next time we have one. But I do think the engagement tables are important, especially when it comes to policy decisions and some of the decisions that we're going to be making here as we take this goal on. I think it's important if they don't want to join, that that's fine. But I think we still invite them and continue to invite them until, you know, they block us from spam calling them. But but I, I think, I don't think it's limited. I guess what I'm saying in a nutshell is that we shouldn't limit ourselves to just one way or the other. I think, I'm glad, I'm happy with the teams going out, but I do think us individually also need to go out and show support for those businesses as well.
Okay, thank you. I will say with the NMIA, we might have something that brings, helps bring them to the table, which is our road project in the NMIA. I mean, the International Way, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up. International Way, our road project in International Way. Anyway, Counselor Massey.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, now I'm circling back to the third bullet. You know, I, I look at this and I go, so is this a, is this a feel good interaction? Are we ever going to really try to get some real data and try to understand what the return on investment of these grants are?
Yeah, I would say yes, based on the measures of success as well as the metrics that we're going to track over the next couple of years are going to help understand that story, tell that story. But there's an anecdotal piece that is just as important, in my opinion.
I agree.
Yeah. And so there's, and I would say that's the piece that is.
I think the feel good is first, but I, I'm sort of thinking down the line about, you know, how we sort of refine the, you know, the grant process, you know, or so that we get the biggest bang for the buck, you know. I don't want to make it, you know, a spreadsheet exercise, but at the same time, I think that there, you know, there has to be some, you know, some hard look at how we, how we're expending this money because it's going out pretty quick.
Counselor Stavendor, I think you're up and down and up again.
Couple clarifying questions to to counsel as we think about that. We have measures and specific outcomes and outputs that are a part of our work on around this goal, that the, that the city is driving, the grant being a vehicle to obtain some of that data. But I'm wondering what council's thinking around like how that money goes out the door and and what would be valuable data that you would like to see coming back in from the grantees? Because each project's different. You're going to see some outcomes around storefront improvements. You're going to see some outcomes around tenant improvements. Businesses have different starting points, you know, with the, the things that they're bringing into, the physical things that they're bringing into the business. There, there's also not an even playing field when it comes to the building that you end up leasing. So I'm, I'm actually really curious to hear a bit of conversation about what data and metrics cumulatively the council would like to see as an outcome for this grant program? Because I think it'll help with some of the conversations that I might have individually with the grantees as I go out, you know, and talk with folks. And I appreciate your comments, Counselor.
You were next. I don't know if that's what you want to address or not.
I'll leave space for if anyone wants to respond to that directly.
Yeah, I actually. I do, real quick, just to let you know, I mean, because it's so different, you know, I've, I've had a couple of businesses myself and, you know, there's so many different things that the grant can be used for. So I think the return on investment is that the business is here and that it's open. And that, you know, behind every small business is a family, right? So the fact that the family is able to, the business here is able to provide for whoever they have in their family, I think that's a metric in itself. The fact that businesses aren't closing, because it's, it's tricky, especially if you deal with landlords that aren't good landlords, that don't want to help, that don't want to, you know. And then again, if you're in a certain situation like the food carts at the end of this, at the end of Main Street, where you don't even know if by the time this one opens, if you're going to be around. I mean, there's just so many variables that that I just think the fact that we're investing, I mean, the return on investment, I believe, is the fact that we're investing in our community and our businesses. I mean, it'd be one thing if they packed up and ran out the door, shut down next day and took the money, ran or whatever, you know, but that's not what's happening. And just seeing, seeing the amount of foot traffic, seeing the amount of people that are patronizing the businesses, seeing the renaissance that's happening in Milwaukee. I mean, to me, that's, that's a return on investment. I mean, it's not, it's not like a grant to build a park where it's like you have to do specific things, right? I mean, who are we to tell the business what they can and can't do with their grant money other than spend it on, you know, wild and crazy stuff, right? Because every business is different. So I think the return on investment is, is a lot simpler than we need to make it, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think success.
Thanks, Counselor. Couple, couple thoughts. And, and I'm sorry for not being more specific in my original comments. But I think, I think you're right. You know, some of the money is going into actually just fixing up our, our infrastructure, our commercial infrastructure in the city. And that's a, that's a big chunk. Sometimes it's more of a chunk than you think, than you think it is going to be when you start out. And in some cases, it's not a 50 50 split on how that shows up in the, in the grant paperwork. And there are exceptions for that and there are reasons for that. I think the city is really flexible when it comes to buildings that are running into things like on 21st. Like, holy crap, right? Like, that, that would be, that would give me great pause. And then other things you can think of would be, you know, what does your, what do your gross sales look like, you know? If, I mean, if we're interested in getting into the, the actual discussion of, you know, the, the economic impact that a business has when they receive one of these grants and and how that kind of plays out, that's, that's a conversation that, I will say, is not currently included in the grant documents. The city is not currently asking to look at somebody's books when. But I think that anecdotally, you could have some of those conversations and glean some of that qualitative information. How many, how many jobs are created here in Milwaukee? I think that's a great metric. How many of those jobs are filled by people who live here in Milwaukee or live in Clackamas County? We're tracking that information because I think that that's a really good storytelling point as well as a good economic point when we think about economic mobility and the advancement and an ability of, of our community to break through generations of poverty. So some of those types of things come to mind for me as we're having those conversations and things that we might want to, to find out our other businesses thinking about those types of things. If we're collectively thinking about those things, then maybe that's a talking point we want to amplify because storefront improvements and tenant improvements leaves no money from the city for marketing, which is a big, a big help to get more foot traffic for the businesses that, that require foot traffic. So I'm happy to, to brainstorm some more around those types of metrics if that's what council's looking for. But if others have ideas, I would love to hear.
Oh, Mayor, if I, if I may, just on the last quick, the, the most baseline metric for return on investment and success is, is increment over a year. So I mean, for URA specific, to be thinking about, it's just, we want that increment to grow all, every year because we're investing in our, in our buildings. And when I say our, I mean, the city's collective buildings, you know, not just public buildings, but private buildings and that infrastructure and the assessed value goes up. So therefore.
Can you clarify what you mean by increment?
The, the URA, the tax increment that we receive, yeah, every single year, that should be going up. If it's stagnant and it's not going up, then we're not doing a good job.
But isn't, doesn't it automatically go up under measures five and 50?
Yeah, 3%, 3%.
It's 3%? And it's not going to go up any more than that? So what does that actually tell us?
Assess value, though, as we improve, make improvements, assess value can go up. You can get more increment out of that, out of those properties. It's not just stagnant, 3% forever. So you can get some little peeps.
Okay.
So that's just the baseline. Just wanted to throw that out there as URA.
Well, and I, I take the point that I don't think we can just say, you know, we can't, we couldn't attribute somebody's bump in income to just our grants. There's so many factors going in here. There's freem, bringing more people to town. There's all these things. So I mean, I, I don't see a lot of point in asking businesses for their, you know, for their financials. I, and I do take the point that they're all very different. And I remember, I think I sent everybody last year when I went to the League Conference in Central Oregon, I sent the URA report from Redmond because I went on a tour of their URA. And they picked a few businesses and wrote profiles of them and sort of how the URA had, how the investment had helped that particular business, you know. And it wasn't a lot of, you know, you know, big financial data. Well, there was some financial data in it for sure. But I mean, I think there are things like that we could do to sort of tell the story of the success of the grant program. But you're really getting more at telling the story of the businesses. And yeah, you know, sort of not just the rising tide lifts all boats, but that, you know, we try to call out individual businesses that maybe aren't getting the publicity that others are getting.
Well, and perhaps the, the point has not been clear enough, and I apologize for that. I think that if we are sharing collective talking points, then we're able to amplify the success of all of the businesses, you know, that are, that are participating or perhaps even more across the whole city. When we, when we find things like local job creation, let's use that as an example. And if we all connected with local businesses and we had that as just part of the conversation, we're trying to glean some of that information, or maybe that's part of the survey that we follow up with. Or maybe we take the survey with us and say, hey, you know, I want to have a cup of coffee, want to visit you here in your business, but through our conversation, I'm also going to be taking notes because I want to fill out this survey on your behalf so we're not creating more work for you. And if we then can combine all of that information and say, you know, we went out and talked to 50 businesses across the city. And of those 50 businesses, we've been able in the last year to increase, you know, local economic opportunities and jobs by 10%. That's a really great measure. And it, and I think it plays directly back to this goal. So that's a, that's a role for council to do a little more legwork with the survey and make connections around specific points. Gather that information, then bring that back and amplify it so we can tell the story of our city.
My turn to promptificate on the URA. I think that to Counselor Kostrovati's point, there is real benefit in showing the impact that our URA has on folks. The fact that we have businesses that are opening up and staying open here in Milwaukee is a really powerful story. On the flip side, we have people who reach out to us frequently about the cost of the URA. And we also see in other cities, I think about Oregon City and the trials and tribulations they've had with their URA. Like, the, the URA is a cost to the city, and I think it's important that we show value and prove our worth in the decision that we've made to have a URA district. So I really like the idea of storytelling in the URA and whether it's this initiative or other initiatives going forward to show our residents time and time again, we chose URA. Here's why this was a good choice and why we've done the right thing. Because I think it's easy for us to see it, but I want to make sure everyone sees that as well. So I am really excited about the storytelling that you're talking about, Rebecca, because I think these grants are a good early sign of what the URA is doing, a real tangible example of that. To circle us back on what I'm hearing, I've kind of heard four different things about what council could do over this quarter. The first is URA storytelling. The second and third are two tables, one for the Industrial Way area and one for the North Milwaukee Industrial Area. And the fourth thing is something that you mentioned offhand, Counselor Kostrovati, but I think would be really beneficial. Our city is thinking about social media right now and thinking about our marketing. And I think that there's a really valuable role that council could play in thinking about how we market our small businesses. Is that through social media? Is that through our pilot? What does that look like? I'm sure if we meet with city staff, but also we could individually do it a little bit because that's the point of this section. What is that kind of social media uplifting? So maybe, all that to say, there are four things that we could do. Rebecca's our council lead on this, so maybe she dips her toe in all of them, maybe she doesn't. And then there are four of us, we're not Rebecca, who we could all assign stuff out to. That would be my threads that I've seen in this conversation, but open to other interpretations as well.
Well, so to follow up on, you know, sort of the conversation about the two tables, it sounds like we probably need to spend the next quarter identifying and meeting with individual businesses in both of those areas and think about the table being a fall, you know, a next quarter thing. That's my, my sense of that.
That's consistent with what we have on the action plan, too. This was really about identifying and preparing invitations, then holding tables in the, in the next quarter.
So doing sort of the two or three businesses in each, each area, or, you know, or more if we can get more done, to talk to them about what their issues are and stuff and, and what would be interesting for them to come to a table with their businesses, you know, what, yeah. And who the key players are at those different, yeah. Yeah. Like I said, I'm, I'm on board for doing that. I'm spending some time now that the legislature's done and the SHS work group is done. I'm going to have more time. So I'm, I'm on board for doing that. I already try to use my social media to promote local businesses. I can do more of that. And I certainly would. And I certainly would love to get a list of, to go in and, and, you know, meet the ones I haven't met and to, you know, maybe have more in-depth conversations with some of the ones that I have. It's, it sounds like Counselor Stavenger has a kind of the elements of a questionnaire or survey in her head and so maybe, maybe we need to have, to kind of flesh that out so that we're all kind of talking on those same points. But uh, I also wanna also point out that, I mean, Milwaukee Bay Park is the one thing that is a, I think it is, it fits all of our goals, right? It's the Parks and Greens space goal. It is an economic development driver for downtown, absolutely. And it is, you know, also fits to the affordability goal because it makes a place of recreation that families don't have to pay to access. So um, I just don't wanna so lose, lose sight of that in some of these conversations. But um, I think generally Counselor, Council President broke it down into four things I was hearing as well. How do we move them forward?
Can I ask Joseph to try to recap what I think our action items are?
Uh, so what I'm hearing is, it sounds like actually you want to hear, well, I guess one question back to council is having a, a common voice or a common talking points. That sounded like it was important just in general. Will, I, I assume we send you talking points for the grantee conversations? We send you the list of grantees. We also help assist you all with identifying two businesses within the N M I, N M I A and International Way to begin to create conversations with and hopefully lead to bigger conversations in the, in I A and the Industrial, International Way area. And then I'm, I'm still a little unclear.
And, and I think those are what I captured too, but I do think we need to know the who on your side. So I, I heard we're giving the contact and/or the, the names of the 19 grant recipients to all of you because I do think it's great for, know, know when you're going into a business, if they got a grant, introduce yourself, build that relationship. But I think this deeper engagement with the grantees to, whether it's a survey or like a interview questionnaire, set up a coffee chat, I, personally, I'd recommend that we like deputize two folks to do that. Avoid the quorum issue, make sure there's consistency. I, again, I, I think I had heard, you know, Counselor Stavenger's the lead on this goal and has, has, as a downtown business owner, has great, I think, insight into what some of those questions would be that get out the anecdotes and the data that will help us amplify the story. And then I heard Council President, your interest in supporting that. So that might be my recommendation of sort of the two leads on that piece. And then for the N M I A and International Way, I do think we can kind of suggest some businesses and some contact info of where to go, but who, I haven't, I know the mayor is interested. I think I heard Counselor Massey and then again Rebecca, or Counselor Stavenger is the, the goal lead here. Do we have leads? Is it one lead per area? Is it a collaborative effort? What would you guys like to do?
I'm available for anything. So if you wanna make it, the mayor and Counselor Massey, since they've both went to make it and, I mean, I'm fine with that and I can alternate. I can, you guys can tell me wherever you need me to be.
Why doesn't everybody sort of say what they'd like to lean in on? Why don't we go around the table, each say where would they like to lean in?
Um, I'll, I'll go with the N M I. Okay.
Love it. I'm happy to do the grant recipients. I think also to your point, Counselor Crossrobody, there are a lot of tables there and so we could think about in future tables, who are the people who wanna sit down with them? Is there someone who helps with Dan or with businesses in Milwaukee?
Oh, well, I, I would, I would say, I mean, I will definitely try to meet more of the grantees on my own, but I agree that, you know, having two people be the, the point people to sort of have the conversations to inform how we further promote or what lessons we learn from how we show the success of the program makes sense. So I'm happy to cede that to someone else. So I would say, you know, N M I A and International Way would be my priority.
Would you rather do two people in those areas or just one?
No, two, but I don't know that it has to be the same two, right?
Well, yeah, it could be. It's like, it's a one, is it a one on, on those, one of us on them engagement or is it two of us on them engagement?
Oh, no, I think it's ideally two. Yeah. I think it's ideally two, but it could be, you know, two different ones on N M I A and two different ones on International Way. It doesn't have to be all the same. I mean, yeah.
I, I'm good with Counselor Stavenger and Council President leading the way in the business of proving grantees and connecting with them. Again, as the mayor said, you know, I don't have any problems going in there and just talking to them. I, I, you know, I do that with, I do, I already do that actually, so. And I would, I would be open to joining Counselor Massey in the N M I A or even in the International Way with the mayor. Either one, whichever one you may not wanna do, I guess.
Um, yeah, I, I appreciate you being a utility player. But I also think you have some really amazing experience as a former business owner, as a current business owner. And actually, I'm wondering, you know, I, I know we all have conversations with businesses in different ways anyway, and I'm actually wondering if, if I could be of more help trying to refine the survey, if that would be helpful. Some of the like backbone for, for questions about like, because we've gone through the grant process and I'm also privy to and grateful to be part of the Mercak conversations. But I just don't know if you need like another fly in your pudding, so. I mean, I can go out on like, on a, on a mission, of course, to talk with more folks, but I do have some ideas about things that we might be wanting to talk to businesses like universally about across the city.
I, I think that would be great. I think actually content for questions and the type of questions would be a fantastic thing to have from your experience. We have our own ideas, but since you have that ground level and we are gonna do more outreach and surveys to businesses, I think it'd be great to get a council lead, I guess, on, on that.
Okay. So I guess that would be helpful, I think, from my perspective to like maybe focus a bit more internally. And then I can have conversations with individual businesses to maybe discuss particular questions or how to get at a, you know, a measure or something like that, if that, if that would work for you all. And then that does not cause a problem with quorum in terms of, you know, going and doing meetings or having conversations. I just won't talk to you.
I mean, the other thing that I think of, we've talked about N M I A, we've talked about International Way implicitly to grant recipients are in the U R A, but neighborhood businesses is not a group that we've talked about. And if we've got an extra utility player who's looking for a table to join, you live on King Road or right next to it. And I think a lot of those businesses, to proactively engage with them before they're eligible for the C E T grants, might be smart. So we could have someone working in N M I A, International Way, swap them however you'd like, someone working with our neighborhood businesses to set the tables ahead of larger conversations and then Rebecca kind of floating around, making sure that we're putting our surveys together and helping coordinate all of that. I think that that sets the tables up for a lot of success. Does that sound like an approach that people make?
I like the addition of neighborhood businesses.
Yeah, I'm fine. Wherever I'm needed.
And I'll be careful to just communicate with Sarah and Joseph so that I'm not creating any quorum issues as I think about questions for the surveys.
Well, and yeah, and you can bring back that, you know, at a meeting, obviously.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last thing I might say, we didn't, the, one thing that I think would be really valuable, Counselor Crossrobody brought up a small business spotlight pilot or like other ways that we do this in our social media. I'd love to, like, if you and Counselor Stavenger would wanna do that, I think that that would be great. Counselor Stavenger is like, stop assigning me work, or if you're like, stop assigning me work, then, but I think that that would be, you mentioned that and I thought that that was a really good idea. And what does that look like?
So I, I would be interested to hear from staff about why they stopped it before. I mean, I do feel like there's a little bit of a, of a picking winners and losers by putting them in the pilot.
There's a, yeah, this is timelink, this has come up this week.
Yeah.
That is it. It is, it, it's using taxpayer dollars to, to give some promotion, which we love, but then it's, if we're not doing that for everyone, it, it can create us inequity and a bias. And so there's really been, and this, this is my predecessor's kind of rule and I, I respect it, is that, you know, we, we won't use Jason's Friday email, the pilot to promote individual businesses. We've tried when it's things like open to the public events that really don't, that aren't business specific to do that, but even that now has become a little challenging as there's more great businesses doing more free events. And so I would just say that to say, it's something we're struggling with. I do think you have more flexibility than we do in that regard. I think it's a, it's a door that we have to be a little careful about opening, but I, I do think you do an excellent job, Mayor, of using like your own platform to, you know, to, to share the news from businesses. And I think this work you're gonna do is gonna give you opportunities and stories that frankly, you might have a, an easier time amplifying. We, we will still find the ways to do it. I hope you've seen on our social media, we're really trying to, to show that love. We know economic development is a goal, but we also, we're, we're concerned about optics and this like idea of picking winners and losers and favoritism.
What, what is new businesses?
That's really been one of our litmus tests. So you'll see like on our social media, you know, if it's a new business opening, it's a, you know, welcome to Milwaukee, but, but it's kind of that one time thing because if we keep doing it, if every week we posted about Frem, it'd be pretty unfair.
Yeah, that's, because I remember the, the mayor, we had these welcome packets at one point that you experienced, experimented with. I don't know if we still do that for new businesses, where you were like a letter from...
I don't think we ever got one pulled together. We talked about it.
I think you, you had a sample one. It was like a letter of welcome to Milwaukee and like a little booklet on Milwaukee that you were interested in doing for businesses and you were inviting businesses to come and speak on their business.
We have had new businesses come and speak and I have a couple more in mind. And so when we do that, it's easy enough to pick up a little piece of the video of them talking to council and put it out on social media, you know? It's an, it's easy to parlay that into a little bit of, 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 of attention. But again, that's only new businesses and to the point that was made earlier, you know, there are lots of older businesses that we'd like to help as well, you know? And, and I, it's a tough, yeah, I see a tough challenge there in terms of using the pilot. But, but what we can do individually, I, you know, yeah.
And maybe this isn't a Gordian knot that we have to cut tonight, but I think this is a good, to Emma's point, this is a good project that someone can begin tugging at over the next quarter or whatever it may be, even to give us guideline, guidance on like, yeah, what we can do, what the city can do and what that looks like. I think that's a helpful need.
All right. I feel like we don't, we've gone over and I still have a couple things I wanna bring up under this goal, so, but I feel like, I'm not sure council, I mean, staff feel like they have clarity.
Go for it, JB.
I got a little more. Counselor Massey, N M I A.
You can add industrial ways, okay?
Yeah, if it's just the two of us, we'll do the two of them together.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. Council President, grantees, conversation.
With Counselor Stavenger.
With Counselor Stavenger. Counselor Body, anywhere and anywhere, we need you. Exactly. Sixth man award goes to Counselor Crossrobody.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Also, if, you know, for whatever reason, one of you can do a stand shot.
Don't forget your microphones, friends.
Counselor Stavenger, you also mentioned helping us create content for the survey. Just so I, my understanding of what survey means is we have a survey, we're going to interact with businesses and get a, a flavor of how they feel about the city. And then there's also this idea of as you go and talk to businesses, you yourself will also be surveying and I think us all kind of saying similar things or at least asking similar questions is important. So that's how I kind of see the survey work.
Well, and there's some questions for the grantees that are maybe different than general business questions, right? I mean, yeah.
Yeah. I think that could be blended in. And to be clear, I'm, I'm not directing any survey. I'm just providing some reflections.
Yes, content.
And thoughts about common data.
Understood. That's how I received it. And I, I see, so staff, we have our, our side of the column that we're, you know, going after. This is a city council endeavor, so we're here to support, but I, I, there does need to be some, I guess, some leadership on, on driving this. If the expectation is that we are doing, we're setting up all these meetings, that's something, I don't know that was the expectation, so that's, that's a concern of mine. I see us as being a support to the council column, I guess, not so much the leaders of that council column, because we have our own column. So just to clarify that in this space too. And that makes maybe things awkward. I don't know.
Could I add maybe a friendly amendment? But I think, I think it makes total sense to set up our own appointments, but I think that perhaps Sarah should be included or just as like maybe CC'd on that in case you haven't been to one of these businesses and you want to go along. I feel like there should be good communication between us and then the conversation that you're, you're gonna be having with those businesses.
I think my understanding is it's the list of N M I A businesses, industrial way businesses, grantee applicants and neighborhood businesses. After we have those lists and contact information, it's up to us to do the rest.
Well, I would, I would see meeting on the N M I A and International Way, I would see first sitting down with Counselor Massey, kind of brainstorming, but then kind of running who we think we wanna talk to by staff. I'm happy to do the outreach if I know how to reach the person, but.
In a point of contact and we can do, we can, you know, come up with our own talking points and do the dollar for dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you all contact and information you can get dangerous with, but, and then we're also here to help, like, and yeah, bring us along. You're not alone in this, but there is, there was a point in separating the work, I guess.
Yep. And I can be your conduit. You meet with me frequently, so you can use part of our check-in times to also check in on these, the progress on these action items, but. Okay. Mayor, you said you had a few more things on economic development?
I did. So I wanted to talk about specifically O L C C. So we have O L, we have a tour of O L C C next week for anybody who wants to come. We did not schedule it at a meeting time because it's not obligatory, but I also didn't want it, I didn't want anybody to feel excluded. So anybody who wants to come can come. It's next Wednesday sometime in the afternoon.
1 P M.
1 P M, okay. O L C C is, you know, is moving. I have a little bit of intel I've gotten from some random sources lately. They are moving. They may not be moving as fast as we hoped they were moving, but they are moving and vacating that property and that's a, a huge property that potentially could come onto the tax rolls and could be reused in some interesting way. And I would like to think about, you know, what we can do to incentivize things we might wanna see there. But, but anyway, the first step is the tour, so come to the tour if you are available. The things I have heard about O L C C is they're only gonna move warehousing to Canby. There, originally, the whole thing was going to Canby and I met somebody who works there who's a bicyclist and I said, oh, you're gonna start riding your bike to Canby? And he said, no, the office parts of O L C C are not moving to Canby. They are only moving the warehousing to Canby and the office parts of O L C C will be housed somewhere in other state government office buildings in the Portland metro area. in the Portland metro area." Um, which, you know, the state has several. Um, so, um, that's one thing I heard. Uh, the second thing I heard is that, um, there's some problems with electrical capacity in Canby, uh, that have slowed their construction down. Canby's, uh, got its own electrical utility, I guess. And, um, there's two, three like big projects going in at once. And there's some electrical, uh, supply issues that are slowing it down. So I don't know how fast they're gonna move. Uh, hopefully we'll learn more about that at our tour next week. Um, but I just wanted to sort of put it on everybody's radar screen as a, as an opportunity for Milwaukee that we should be thinking about, um, how to, uh, how to try to influence what happens there. Um, whether it's, you know, two years down the road or three years down the road or whatever it might be. Um, I think that was, uh, yeah, that was the only thing I had on, um, on economic development. Anyone else? Oh, maybe you got you go.
I'm curious, when you talk about capitalizing on that space created by the vacancy, are you thinking about the NMIA master plan? Or are you thinking about something else?
Well, yeah. I mean, at the time of the NMIA plan, nobody thought that was going anywhere. So I don't think it says anything specific to that, uh, uh, to that parcel. It does allow, uh, you know, three-story use throughout or higher use, uh, throughout the, um, industrial area. Um, it, you know, it does, would allow more intensification of use there. Um, and so is there anything we can be doing? And we have another parcel that's up for sale now in the NMIA down at the south, at the north end, uh, like a five-acre parcel. And, um, yeah, are there things we could be doing to influence how those get sold? You know, and I don't know the answer to that. I mean, maybe there's not a lot we can do, but I do think we should be thinking about that. And, 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 and creating, doing things that would attract businesses that would be bigger job creators. Because we have a lot of warehousing businesses in the NMIA that are not necessarily high job creators. Um, so just something I wanted to put out there that I feel like we should be thinking about. Um, all right. If nothing else on economic development, we will take a 15-minute dinner break and come back at 20 till? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, folks, we are back on the record for our public hearing part of the evening. And we'll start out with the annexation of 5706 West Fork Street, file number A20025-002, which will be presented by Senior Planner Brett Kelver.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Brett Kelver, Senior Planner with the city. And we've got an expedited annexation for you this evening. No PowerPoint presentation for it as per the practice. This is a property on West Fork Street that actually jumped in at the beginning of our Northeast Sewer Extension Project back in 2010, 2011, took advantage of the financing deal that we had. They paid their reimbursement district fee, but were happy to not be in the city until finally their septic system failed and they needed to connect to the sewer. So they went through the emergency connection procedure and are going through the process to annex into the city. So that is the long and short of it.
So I was a little puzzled by this one because it's north of Johnson Creek Boulevard, right?
Correct.
I thought the Nisi area was all south of Johnson Creek Boulevard.
Most of it is. I think, and I wasn't in on the details of that project. I was here when it happened, wasn't in on the details. I'm not sure why sewer ended up going in on West Fork. I think in part because maybe there just wasn't any there. But there is other sewer, because I think Wes maintains this particular line, and I'm not sure what their network is, but that's there. And then Portland also has it. So I'm not sure why they did it, but they did stretch to put sewer in there. And I think the properties on the south side of West Fork are technically in the Nisi area. And some of them did annex in years past.
And so even though Wes is their sewer provider, they have to annex to the city. We're not their sewer provider.
Correct.
That's interesting. I thought it was all about us owning the pipes in the street, and that's why they had to annex.
Well, I'm not sure who they'll pay their sewer bill to, because there is that north-south split there, that the folks on the north side remain unincorporated, I think of that block, unincorporated, Clackamas County. And again, whatever the deal was, I guess Wes is maintaining that line. But I'm not sure if they'll pay the sewer bill to us, because I think they're also getting Clackamas River water as well. So yeah, it's a little different setup there.
Interesting. Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Brett? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion.
Excuse me. I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, file number A2025-002.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, file number A2025-002. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, file number A2025-002. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None heard. It passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, file number A2025-002. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee, file number A2025-002.
And Mr. Stoffer, would you please call the council?
Council President Anderson.
Aye.
Council Staub and Jordan.
Aye.
Council Kosterbadi.
Aye.
Council Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2253.
All right. We don't have to read anything on appeals or anything. All right. So now we go to the Natural Resource Code update, a continued hearing from back in May. The continued public hearing on the proposed Natural Resource Code update is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff update, continue deliberations, and consider approving the proposed ordinance. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Kelver.
All right. Sorry, we were getting things set up. You said we're ready.
I turned it over to you.
All right. Well, so we are back tonight from the opening hearing, May 20th, to consider some amendments to the Natural Resource Code at Section 19.402. And just a very quick recap for anyone who might be watching online of this. You all have read the report and heard the presentation last time, but just a real quick overview. So what we're talking about are the areas primarily along the Willamette River, Johnson Creek, Kellag Creek, and we have a few other wetland areas that are designated as either Water Quality Resource or Habitat Conservation Area. And this Section 19.402 are the regulations that cover that. And our effort has been primarily for three things. One, with the recent updates to the city's tree code, we want to make sure the Natural Resource Code was integrated properly with that. We did have a couple of fixes to the code itself, in particular, one related to housing and some of the requirements for clean and objective standards, including for these water quality resource areas. We discussed that last time. And we also just talked a little bit about the mapping and just trying to kind of simplify the process for making more detailed updates to the map. It seemed like the key question that we discussed last time was the effort to establish a very small exemption to allow binge-type features a little bit closer to the edge of a wetland or the top of a bank of a stream than the current code allows for a little bit, but not that close. And so what we talked about some, or we went away and came back with, was an attempt to have a very narrow exemption carved out for this. We talked a little bit about, I think, it was the Minthorne Springs property was the key property that we were using as example, what we were trying to solve for. And we struggled a little bit in our discussion with the public-private aspect of it. That's not a publicly owned property. It is obviously largely publicly accessible, and that was the point. So what we came to was deciding that the cleanest, easiest way to do this was to just make it an allowance for all properties and just to be very specific and very limited for it. Also remembering that there are still processes, if someone wants to do more than this, they can go through the review processes there. But this seemed to be a way to strike that balance of allowing a little bit of approach, the idea is to let people get a comfortable place to sit near these features so they can enjoy them without allowing too much disturbance. And that came to, I know we had some questions about three, four, or five square feet. We looked at a couple of different binge types and just came up with a number that seemed like it was reasonable to have a small allowance for disturbance. So this is the language that we came up with. And I think, I guess the only other slide I had was going to be the one just to reiterate your decision-making options. So I think with that, I would just kind of pause or stop and see if there's any other thoughts or discussion about this, because this seemed to be the one thing that we wanted to try to resolve.
Did anyone have any questions on this or anything else? It's kind of your time to ask any questions about this code package. Not seeing any. Oh, yes.
I was just going to say, I feel like this follows up well from that conversation we had last time you brought this forward. So I appreciate that. Thanks for all your work with this den's package. So I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think this is a good solution. And I understand the thing that was expressed in the staff report about not creating yet another review on whether it's publicly accessible or not, how do you determine that. So this is just a narrow targeted exemption so that we don't have to get into that question. That makes sense to me. Appreciate you guys working that out. Okay. So we didn't get any more written comment, I assume?
No.
No. Okay.
And yeah, a quick shout out to Justin on that. He helped me sort through and talk through the details of that language. So that was useful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any need for discussion? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, Section 19.402, Natural Resources, to improve effectiveness...
Okay, folks, we are back on the record for our public hearing part of the evening. And we'll start out with the annexation of 5706 West Fork Street, file number A20... Oh, 2025-002, which will be presented by Senior Planner Brett Kelver.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Brett Kelver, Senior Planner with the city. And we've got an expedited annexation for you this evening. No PowerPoint presentation for it as per the practice. This is a property on West Fork Street that actually jumped in at the beginning of our Northeast Sewer Extension Project back in 2010, 2011, took advantage of the financing deal that we had. They paid their reimbursement district fee, but were happy to not be in the city until finally their septic system failed and they needed to connect to the sewer. So they went through the emergency connection procedure and are going through the process to annex into the city. So that is the long and short of it.
So I was a little... I was a little puzzled by this one because it's north of Johnson Creek Boulevard, right?
Correct.
I thought the Nisi area was all south of Johnson Creek Boulevard.
Most of it is. This is, I think, and I wasn't in on the details of that project. I was here when it happened, wasn't in on the details. I'm not sure why sewer ended up going in on West Fork. I think in part because maybe there just wasn't any there. And so, but there is other sewer, because I think Wes maintains this particular line, and I'm not sure what their network is, but that's there. And then Portland also has it. So I'm not sure why they did it, but they did stretch to put sewer in there. And those, I think the properties on the south side of West Fork are technically in the Nisi area. So, and some of them did annex in years past.
And so even though Wes is their sewer provider, they have to annex to the city. We're not their sewer provider.
Correct.
That's interesting. I never, I thought it was all about us owning the pipes in the street, and that's why they had to annex.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure who they'll pay their sewer bill to, but I, because there is that north-south split there, that the folks on the north side remain unincorporated, I think of that, that block, unincorporated, Clackamas County. And again, whatever the deal was, I guess Wes is maintaining that line. But I'm, yeah, I'm not sure if they'll pay the sewer bill to us, because I think they're also getting Clackamas River water as well. So, yeah, it's, it's a little different setup there.
Interesting. Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Brett? Not seeing any? I will entertain a motion.
Excuse me. I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201. Good luck, Emma. And located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A-2025-002.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, and located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A2025-002. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? None heard? It passes unanimously. Ms. Sager, would you read the ordinance two times by title only?
Certainly, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, and located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A2025002. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, annexing a tract of land identified as tax lot 1S2E30AA06201, and located at 5706 Southeast West Fork Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A2025002.
And Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Council President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Stavon Jordan.
Aye.
Counselor Coasterbody.
Aye.
Counselor Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2253.
All right. We don't have to read anything on appeals or anything. All right. So now we go to the Natural Resource Code update, a continued hearing from back in May. A continued hearing, public hearing on the proposed Natural Resource Code update is called to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff update, continue deliberations, and consider approving the proposed ordinance. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Kelver.
All right. Sorry, we were getting things set up. You said we're ready.
I turned it over to you. Yes.
All right. Well, so we are back tonight from the opening hearing, May 20th, to consider some amendments to the Natural Resource Code. It's section 19.402. And just a very quick recap for anyone who might be watching online of this. You all have read the report and heard the presentation last time. Just a real quick overview. So what we're talking about are the areas primarily along the Willamette River, Johnson Creek, Kellag Creek, and we have a few other wetland areas that are designated as either Water Quality Resource or Habitat Conservation Area. And this section 19.402 are the regulations that cover that. And our effort has been primarily for three things. One, with the recent updates to the city's tree code, we want to make sure the Natural Resource Code was integrated properly with that. We did have a couple of fixes to the code itself, in particular, one related to housing and some of the requirements are clean and objective standards, including for these water quality resource areas. We discussed that last time. And then we also just talked a little bit about the mapping and just trying to kind of simplify the process for making more detailed updates to the map. The, seemed like the key question that we discussed last time was the effort to establish a very small exemption to allow bench-type features a little bit closer to the edge of a wetland or the top of a bank of a stream than the current code, you know, allows for a little bit, but not, not that close. And so what we, we talked about somehow, we went away and came back with was an attempt to have a very narrow exemption carved out for this. We talked a little bit about, I think the, it was the Minthorne Springs property was the key property that we were using as example, what we're trying to solve for. And we struggled a little bit in our discussion with the public, private aspect of it. That's not a publicly owned property. It is obviously largely publicly accessible, and that was the point. So what we, what we came to was deciding that the cleanest, easiest way to do this was to just make it an allowance for all properties and just to be very specific and very limited for it. Also remembering that there are still processes, if someone wants to do more, more than this, that can go through the review processes there. But this seemed to kind of be a way to strike that balance of allowing a little bit of approach, you know, the idea is to let people get a comfortable place to sit near these features so they can enjoy them without allowing too much disturbance. And that came to, I know we had some questions about three, four, or five square feet. We looked at a couple of different bench types and, and just came up with a number that seemed like it was reasonable to have a small, a small allowance for disturbance. So this is the language that, that we came up with. And I think, I guess the only other slide I had was going to be the one just to reiterate your decision-making options. So I think with that, I would just kind of pause or stop and, and see if there's any other thoughts or discussion about, about this, because this seemed to be the one thing that we wanted to try to resolve.
Did anyone have any questions on this or anything else? It's kind of your time to ask any questions about this code package. Not seeing any? Oh, yes?
I was just gonna say, I feel like this follows up well from that conversation we had last time you brought this forward. So I appreciate that. Thanks for all your work with this Den's package. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, I think this is a good solution. And I understand the, the thing that was expressed in the staff report about not creating yet another review on, you know, whether it's publicly accessible or not, how do you determine that. And so this is just a narrow targeted exemption, so that we don't have to get into that question. That makes sense to me. Appreciate you guys working, working that out. Okay. So we didn't get any more written comment, I assume?
No.
No. Okay.
And yeah, a quick shout out to Justin on that. He, he helped me sort through and talk through the, the details of, of that language. So that was useful.
Okay. Thanks. Any need for discussion? Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, section 19.402, Natural Resources, to improve effectiveness, comply with state requirements related to housing, and better align with the city's tree code. File number ZA-2025-001.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, section 19.402, Natural Resources, to improve effectiveness, comply with state requirements related to housing, and better align with the city's tree code. File number ZA2025-001. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? None heard? Ms. Sager, please read the ordinance two times by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, section 19.402, Natural Resources, to improve effectiveness, comply with state requirements related to housing, and better align with the city's tree code. File number ZA2025001. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Milwaukee Municipal Code, section 19.402, Natural Resources, to improve effectiveness, comply with state requirements related to housing, and better align with the city's tree code. File number ZA2025001.
And Mr. Stauffer, would you please poll the council?
Council President Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Stavon Jordan.
Aye.
Counselor Coasterbody.
Aye.
Counselor Massey.
Aye.
Mayor Beatty.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2254.
All right. Congratulations. You got out of here in record time.
Thank you all. Thanks. Thanks for that.
Yeah. So we still have council reports, and then we do have an executive session. So anybody have any council reports they want to give?
I have one.
Okay.
So I know I mentioned this lightly previously in the meeting, but there will be a dance-off downtown on Saturday at 2:00 PM between the two mascots that represent Milwaukee. Now, this is Millie the Goose and Mustangus, the Mustang mascot of, of Milwaukee High School. I'm not going to say who I'm rooting for.
Goose.
I know that a lot of people have been engaged in selecting the song for the dance-off. And I, I have it on good, good inform, I have it on good authority.
Are you announcing the winner?
No, no, no. I have it on good authority that at least one of those mascots is practicing. So if you're watching this, Mustangus, you better step it up, because I'm pretty sure that the goose is coming for you.
Do we?
And, and I know we have to be somewhat impartial here, but, but I'm not going to be. No. I, I love both of our mascots somewhat equally, but I'm, I will be there to cheer on both of you, but mostly the goose, because Millie's gonna bring it.
Okay.
So I hope that, that my, my colleagues on council will be there as well.
Well, and before that, the hour before that, we have the opening of the, the time capsule at the Historic City Hall. So there's a whole, and then at 5 o'clock, we have the duck race. So there's a whole afternoon of events to come.
And, and check the calendar, too, because at 3:00 PM on Saturday, there's a cherry pie baking contest that will be judged very officially. And then on Sunday at 3:00 PM...
Who's judging it?
Well, I, would you like to get in the mix? There is an opportunity here. There's an opportunity here. And then on Sunday at 3:00 PM, there is a cherry pie eating contest. And I am not sure at this point if they're going to be the same pies. But I, I mean, you have to show up to actually find out. It's gonna be epic. So if you are in Milwaukee and you are not participating in Milwaukee Fest this weekend, you better have a good excuse.
What are you doing?
What are you even doing?
What are you even doing? That's right. And if one wants to, I have not seen anything about said cherry pie contest. So how does one enter a cherry pie?
One would bring said cherry pie, freshly baked, to the corner of Jackson and Main. And then one would go inside the door of B-Side Records and Vintage.
Okay.
And then the team there will show you to where the judging will occur.
Okay.
The pie to the, to the red room. It's cherry pies. You have to drop the pie off by, I, I think it's, I think it's either 12 or 1.
Oh, okay.
It's on the, it's on the...
It's on the city's webpage about the...
We'll get it there. We'll get it there. The information is out there. Yeah, it's going down.
I want to thank B-Side. This was a part of the Milwaukee Fest dream that just kept not quite coming together. We were trying to do it on Sunday, and it was like, and thank you. Oh, it could be a nightmare still. But it still, to me, is better than the cherry pit spitting contest that happened at Milwaukee Days. So I think we're stepping up.
That's a low bar.
Counselor Coasterbody's been practicing for that.
This is, it's a low bar, and I hope that it's the first annual so that we can actually improve in, in the next year. But if you're, if you're a baker and you want to participate...
If you want to bring a pie, okay.
And just to, just to reiterate, 2:00 PM, Plaza of Champions Mascot Dance Off.
Oh, yeah.
We have a, the winner will be crowned the Milwaukee-est mascot of 2025. The sash has arrived. Some serious bragging rights there.
Wow.
I, I yield my time. I yield my time.
All right. That's a tough act to follow, but does anyone else have a council report? Nope? I'm not seeing any? Okay. Well, I sent you guys all a, a thing about the C4 Retreat. I definitely encourage people to consider attending that. I did notice that the morning return conflicts with the, so maybe attend the Friday, but the Saturday morning conflicts with the Pride event, unfortunately. Also, the Clackamas County Fair reached out to mayors. I don't know if they reached out to other councilors, encouraging us to participate in their parade that kicks off the fair and their opening ceremony. I haven't, I have not done the parade before, but I'm thinking about doing it. So if anybody wants to walk in the parade, let me know. We could carry a Milwaukee banner. So, anyway. And that, I'm sorry, is August 12th, which I believe is a Tuesday. It's kind of a weird day to have, but I think it's a Tuesday. Okay. So with that, if no other council reports...
Just a suggestion. No, I don't have, I'm just curious. Is there a dunk tank at Milwaukee Fest?
I do not believe there's a dunk tank this year.
Wouldn't it be cool to dunk your officials?
This is, this is year one. We had so much room to grow. It's Tuesday. Give me time.
Somebody, I think somebody in Milwaukee has a dunk tank, because we had one for the K-9 walks. They used to dunk police officers all the time. And we had one for the Orange Line opening, and Mayor Gamba and I both got in that one. A lot of your elected officials back at that day in 2015 got in that. I have a great picture of Mayor Gamba going down in the water. Yeah.
And it's gonna be hot on Saturday. If you're out there and you have a dunk tank...
If you have a dunk tank, reach out. Reach out. You can email the mayor, or you can call the city's number on the city website. We can make room for a dunk tank. A little cheers. Oh, we could fill it with at least red water, I guess. Yeah. Okay. So if no further council reports, after the meeting, council will meet in executive session pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute 192.6602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. We don't have any members of the news media here, so I won't bother reading the rest of that. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this special session.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
It's moved, seconded, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say no? None heard? The meeting is adjourned. And are we going in here?